Hello, good evening. This is being recorded. I would like to call the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting to order.
And I'll call the Concord School Committee meeting to order. And welcome, thanks to those who are here. Let's see, we start with public comments. We have one blue sheet. We have Mr. Stuart Weeks, who would like to make a comment? Would you like to come up and join us? And let's see, those are taken. Why don't we have you come over here, so you can turn on that microphone? Welcome.
Turn green.
Wait, oh, there we go.
There we go. That one slide.
Sure.
Welcome. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address first, then we'd love to hear your comments.
Thank you, Heather. So my name is Stuart Weeks. I'm at 100 Newbury Court currently with my parents and their greetings, otherwise on Lowell Road. I'm a native son of Concord. I'm the founder of the Center for American Studies, we're in our 43rd year. And I address this as a Concord and Concord-Carlisle School Committee. And I do so on behalf of some old friends, I trust of all of us. Amos Bronson Alcott and Louisa May, wonderful team. Amos Bronson was superintendent of schools and his devoted pupil William Tore Harris was America's second Commissioner of Education. Who took Bronson Alcott's ideas and ideals, the superintendent reports, and they were circulated all over the country. Seeds were planted. Remarkable what he did, and I'm really speaking on behalf of him as well, tonight. In my work with the Center for American Studies, we welcomed international leaders from over 68 nations. I shook their hands, I looked in their eyes, and their question was, "Do you understand the significance of Concord for the rest of the world? Do you understand the significance of this town for the rest of the world?" And that spirit, friends, I speak. And I sent a note raising a question. And that is, there's a lot of evidence that not just tobacco industry has been targeting our children, and the pharmaceutical industry, as we've heard more recently, reports leading to convictions and fines, but also the IT industry has been targeting our children. And the question I asked is if we can imagine that on some level, our children know that. I also ask, how would we feel if we knew that we were being targeted, days, weeks, months, years? And these targeters, God bless them, are really explicit, and very explicit. How would we feel? So the question I'm bringing to the school committee here in Concord, Massachusetts, the heart and soul of the nation, is if this is indeed the case, if these IT leaders are doing that in order, as the expression goes, in their own circles, excuse me for saying this, but in order to make a killing compelled by our business ethic, continuous and unlimited growth, are we not just as grownups and adults, but as parents going to simply stand by if our children are being targeted or not? So I want to bring this question, which lies in my heart. I've worked with many students in the different schools in Concord over the years, since 1986. Takes a village to raise a child, so I'm partly speaking in that spirit. But I want to offer that question to the school committee and to the administration, whether this is a subject we can take up, as opposed to "mum" being the word here in Concord, which has really done so much for the history of this nation. I'll conclude with two quotations, if we have this microphone working, that speak to the challenge that we are facing, those who are so moved. One second. These are short quotations. So the first is something I think is probably people are familiar with. A precautionary approach on these matters, some experts suggest, makes a lot of sense. "We're invited to learn from the past: tobacco, asbestos, lead, and gasoline, trans fats, PCE, and fat order. And since we're talking about our children, the future itself, put their health and well-being before profits. Lack of scientific certainty in the face of serious potential threats need not justify inaction. In such instances, common sense suggests that one can adopt a precautionary approach. For instance, a concern about smoking was first raised in 1949. It took nearly half a century of what we consider to be inconclusive studies until in 1995 California became the first state to ban smoking in public establishments. To this day, one and a half to two million people are recognized as dying of lung cancer, alone each year." The last quotation I can conclude, friends, is from the former CEO of Microsoft Canada. "The more research I did on these matters, the more I became concerned. I attended a meeting with Health Canada and Industry Canada, our local council. I was amazed at the lack of interest in hearing any of the concerns from the community. The Industry Canada folks were there simply to quiet everybody." So I continue my research and I realize that in my career, I've seen tremendous benefits that technology can provide, but I've also seen what can happen if it's not implemented properly. And after my investigation and my analysis, I came to the conclusion that our implementation of wireless technology is not safe, period, full stop. So friends, but one angle of vision, thank you, that we have the possibility, citizens that come forward and share these thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Yes, let's let this, well, is that okay, poetry and rhyme first?
Yeah, either order is fine. Poetry and rhyme is...
Ladies, kids...
Strength in numbers, poetry and rhyme.
Poetry and rhyme.
If it's all right, well, if it can present on the computer?
Absolutely, yeah.
Can they see in the camera?
Can everybody see?
Can you see them?
To do it on the computer, I think consideration...
He's going to move.
Okay, let's hold that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you should have a page of notes, and on the back of the page, there are two poems that we'll refer to at some point in this presentation. I'm Patty Russo, I'm a poetry therapist and intergenerational facilitator, and Partners in Rhyme is a program I created that uses poetry to bring generations together. And here with me today are Shell Hull, who is an English teacher at Concord-Carlisle High School, and she's been the host of Partners in Rhyme for many years. Also, we have some former participants, Helen, Athos, Claire, and Henry, and we'll be hearing from them briefly as well. And Concord-Carlisle High School has been hosting this program for the past 10 years. Okay, what is Partners in Rhyme? Partners in Rhyme is an intergenerational poetry program where older adults join in an English class to read, discuss, and write poetry. And they work in small groups for once a week for five to six weeks. So a typical class looks like this. Each class has a theme, and everything that we do during that class is related to the theme, so from the icebreaker to the closing activity. Themes are chosen based on each class, but some particular themes that I go back to are gratitude, mindfulness, rejuvenation, the importance of community. Each class, we read two to three poems from both contemporary and traditional poets, and then we discuss them. And our discussion is a little bit different than what typically might happen in Ms. Hull's class, for example. We focus on the emotional response to the work, rather than analyzing the style, the message, or rhyme scheme. We focus on what the poem brings up for the reader. And part of that is an attempt to demystify poetry through a connection with the poem. Because I think that poetry, a lot of students, not all thankfully, don't care for poetry, and I believe that if they can form a connection with the poem, not unlike how they do with music, there will be an appreciation for it. I mean, if the only music they ever heard was Beethoven or Kendrick Lamar, you know, and they didn't like either, then they probably, you know, don't walk away from it as quickly as they read a Robert Frost or, you know, something, a ode to a Grecian urn. It got youed with me. And, you know, they may not connect with it, so, you know, but they dismiss it. So my goal, I believe that poetry is for everyone, and my goal is to form that connection. And then after we discuss the poem, we do a reflective writing exercise where I've provided a prompt and maybe someone reading, and then we share the writing, which is always optional. So that's a lot of words on page. Let's take a look at what this looks like in action. So "Dust of Snow" is a poem, is a little gem of a poem by Robert Frost that not too many people, well, that isn't read all that often. And so the way I work with this is, if you want to turn it over, we can kind of do it together. And we always read the poem out loud, because poetry is meant to be heard. So tonight, Helen Young has offered to read us "Dust of Snow." And as she reads it, as I do with the students, I invite you to underline any words or phrases that resonate with you for whatever reason. Go ahead, Helen.
Wait, is this yet my, should I stand in front of my...
It's perfect.
Great, very good.
"The way a crow shook down on me this dust of snow from him or her has given my heart a change of mood and saved some part of a day I could ruin."
Thank you, Helen. So what we would focus primarily on is the message of the poem, which is, does anybody want to say what the message of the poem was for them? Or should I just say?
Yeah, so for me, it's about how a very unexpected event, a crow initiated it, produced some snow that produced an image that touched a heart that saved a day.
There you go.
I think that's what he's trying to tell us.
Yeah.
And I couldn't underline anything, because I just wanted to listen to you.
Okay, it's wonderful to hear it all loud, isn't it? Yeah, exactly. So the narrator is, you know, kind of having a bad day, and the crow dusted some snow on him or her, and, you know, all of a sudden, the mood lifted. So the way that we would use this is, we would have the groups talk about, or write about, a time in nature, a recent time in nature, when, recent time when nature unexpectedly changed their mood for the better. So, I mean, we could talk about, you know, there's a lot to talk about with "Dust of Snow." It looks like such a simple poem. If you look at the 34 words, only two of them have more than one syllable. You know, there's a wonderful rhyme scheme, there's symbolism, and sometimes we talk about that, because it's exciting, and that's where the connection is. But for the most part, we would focus on that sort of emotional connection that the students get and the adults get with the poem. Am I forgetting anything?
I think so.
Okay. All right, so now, Shell, Ms. Hull is going to talk about the benefits of the program.
So a wonderful thing for me is that I just get to sit down and sort of watch this unfold. And one of the best things is that students have to be sort of immediately and consistently engaged up the whole class. They have a senior citizen standing right next to them, sitting right next to them that are hosting. They have to sort of, in all the kinds of good ways, be on, if you will. They can't check out, they can't pick up their devices, they can't just walk out of class. So it's one of the best ways just to have students be engaged in a nonevalorative setting. It's just sort of like, I heard the term today in our professional development, relaxed alertness. They're kind of relaxed, they don't have to learn something academic like clock trains and couplets and rhyme schemes, but they can also be very social while they're doing this, and have to attend to someone else who's sitting right next to them. So this offers a really novel way to explore poetry with a senior citizen that you don't know coming into your classroom. It definitely develops social, emotional learning and academic skills, and I'll talk about that in just a second. It shifts the way teens view older adults and vice versa, and Patty's got some statistics about the shift that students have in their perspective on adults, which is actually more profound than their perspective on poetry, and speaks to the social, emotional piece. It helps participants, all participants feel more connected to the community. Patty, before we got up here, was talking about how seniors just coming into the building get to physically see the in the building, see all kinds of students, see art on the wall, see your art gallery. So it's sort of a way for them to feel connected directly to the high school. It allows senior citizens to personally experience the CHS. And in terms of social, emotional learning, if I could just, if you could humor me, I'm going to read you one more short poem. I love the poems that Patty chooses, they're so thoughtfully selected. And they're also really beautiful poems by contemporary and or classic, traditional poets. I love Wendell Berry's, I might be biased, but if you could bear with me, I'm going to read this poem. It's a little heavy at the beginning, but there's a lightness by the end. And though not all students can connect to everything in the poem, they can definitely connect to the prompt that comes after. So this is "The Peace of Wild Things" by Wendell Berry. "When despair for the world grows in me, and I wake in the night at the least sound in fear of what my life and my children's lives may be, I go and lie down where the wooddrake rests of his beauty on the water and the great heron feeds. I come into the peace of wild things who do not tax their lives with forethought of grief. I come into the presence of still water, and I feel above me the day-blind stars waiting with their light. For a time, I rest in the grace of the world and am free." That's such a powerful poem, if you really kind of let that sink in. And I think for students, that does sink in to a degree at least, and then to get this wonderful prompt afterwards, where do you go to refill, recharge? So even if you can't connect with all the things in the poem, you can think about this for yourself, in a meaningful way, and it's social, emotional learning that's authentic, and doesn't feel patronizing, or awkward, or uncomfortable. It's really in the context of this activity with a senior citizen, and they're all doing it, so it doesn't feel forced. And that's a great thing about the way the social, emotional learning's embedded in this program, if that makes sense. So this is a great example. Are you there to continue with the data?
Sure. Any questions? Sure. Okay. Okay, so after doing the program for about five years, I realized I need to collect some data, because data talks, and Miss Goodwin, they're applying for grams and all that. So I started to give a questionnaire, a questionnaire two times to the students, once before the program and once after, with these five questions. What age do you consider to be old? I enjoy spending time with older adults. I am comfortable speaking with people I do not know. I'm confident participating in classroom discussions, and I enjoy poetry. And then they have a five-point scale. So it's interesting what we found, this is a little humbling for those of us on the wrong side. What age do you consider to be old? Before the program, the average is 62. Not good. But the good news is that after the program, it bumps up to 84. And that is significant at the P.01 level, for those who care about things like that. I'm more worry-braided with this. Anyway, so that's that one. Then another question that had significance was, I enjoy spending time with older adults. Before the program, they're like, yeah, you know, middle of the road, a little bit higher. And then after the program, it bumps up to clearly positive side of 4.3. Okay? So another significant change. And the third area where we saw significance was in the poetry question. It used to be worried, I like poetry, I like to read poetry. Before, you know, clearly they're 1.9, do not like poetry, and after, they do not like it a little bit less. You know, we're not, I'd love it to be four, but, you know, as long as it's movement in the right direction. So that's all that Ms. Hull and I have to share with you, and now we'd like to have you hear from previous participants. Did you have any questions before?
It's an elective.
I'm sorry?
It's an elective.
No, it's, we're invited into an actual classroom.
That actually makes this much more interesting. It's statistics.
Yes.
Because if it was, would have been an elective, so the people would actually choose to go and work with adults and with poetry.
Nope.
If it's not an elective, it's a much more interesting statistic.
Yeah, yeah.
Much more significant.
Right.
Patty, do students experience you as a poet in residence, or how do they...
I don't know how they experience you.
Basically, as a law symphony teacher, does that make sense to you?
Well, I'll just say something about that, because Patty comes in and first meets with students first, before the seniors come in, so she can kind of prep them. It's not just the seniors are suddenly showing up. She tells them about the program, she does the survey, answers questions, lets them know what it's going to be like, sort of lets them know how the seniors are feeling. They probably feel nervous as well. So I think they just see Patty as someone who's coming in and being direct and authentic with her instruction and explanation of the program. And I would say that you get a lot of trust, like, for students coming into the classroom. I think she gets a lot of respect, and I think they understand that she's got a lot of experience and really wants to make this work for everybody, because it benefits everybody. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Patty, or Shelly, are these just high school kids, or are they freshmen, or all age?
Just ninth graders, just one, right now, just one of my classes. We're hoping to get some funding to expand the program, so that senior citizens...
You have a grant.
We put a grant in to expand it, so we need...
Have you done any with middle school or grade school?
I've done a program for four years with preschoolers in Carlisle. Yeah, the integrated preschool in Carlisle.
How was that?
Well, it was fun, it was different. We didn't read Robert Frost, it focused mainly on picture books. Yeah. And yeah, I'll be doing the program in Cambridge at the Youth Center with the senior citizens. Self students, so, sorry.
The same for the participants.
Yeah, yeah, let's hear from them. Okay, where would you like the students and the adult students? Would you like to come on the microphone?
You can just come on.
Claire's going to go first. Yeah, we thought maybe Claire, Helen, Athos, Henry? Is that okay? Okay.
So Partners in Rhyme is a really wonderful program, and I think that the best part of it is that the intergenerational learning is very evident, because when we're freshmen, we're obviously very young, and there's a wide age range in the classroom, which I think is really important. And everybody has different points of view and different life experiences, so they all interpret poems differently. And it's really a way to kind of hear other people's viewpoints, and maybe something that you haven't seen before. And then at the end, there's this, they call it a favorite poem project, which is really fun, because everybody chooses their favorite poem, and it's a share of the class, which is really interesting to see, especially with the different ages, like I said before, because everybody chooses something different.
Thank you. That's great.
I guess what I want to say is, what fun it is to participate in this as a senior. I've been doing it, I had to look back, since 2011. So this is my 10th academic year, and it's wonderful to get to be in a classroom, see what students today are like, and to interact with them. Sometimes they're, as Patty's indicated, sometimes they're not very turned on to poetry at the beginning, sometimes they're even not very turned on at the end. They're more turned on than they were originally. And some of them come up with wonderful contributions when you ask them to share what they've seen in this poem and what they felt. I wish I could remember some specifics, but I can only tell you that the young people today are very, very articulate, very thoughtful, very vivid. And as a senior, it's just been a whole lot of fun to participate.
Thank you.
And actually, there must be, for the adults there, there must be an added value, because according to the statistics, by the end of the year, you're much younger.
All right, I wrote down, does this work?
The recording, so we can, we stick up a little bit.
Okay, so I wrote down what I was going to say. So the Partners in Rhyme program really helped me frame a good idea of what poetry is. It was a really critical tool to help me start to analyze poetry in a constructive way, but without all of the, like, rhetorical ideas, like speech, like form, tone. It made poetry engaging for me for the first time in a while, and my understanding of the works we read greatly improved me being in a room with all different people with different life experiences. My partner in Rhyme was Witty, he was a pastor in church in Carlisle for a few years. And hearing the voices of my classmates and the elderly reading equally the works from more than a hundred years ago was amazing to me, because everyone got something different out of it. And I learned through the Partners in Rhyme program that everyone interprets poetry differently based on their own experiences. And finally, it helped me see the elderly as more curious and willing to learn than ever before. And I think that in, like, the intergenerational part of this, it's really, like, humanistic, it adds a more humanistic lens to poetry, because now in junior education, I'm looking at it with the rhetorical ideas I'm in writing. And I, like, always think back to, oh, what was the poet feeling at the time, like, and writing exercises at the end, this was always great, so I can think of what I was thinking.
Thank you so much. That's great.
I'm not sure this is on.
It's just for the recording, so.
Oh.
It's not amplifying mic?
I'm Henry Dyer, and I like to think that I was in on this game early, because I was on the committee of the Concord-Carlisle Community Chess that decided to give a grant to Patty for her wonderful idea. Now, I'm a citizen of Concord, and this was being done through the Carlisle Council on Aging. And I said, you know, if you had an extra space, I would love to come along as a cockroach and wander. And as Robert Frost once said, "That has made all the difference," because I've been hooked on the program from the beginning. And the word that comes to me is "demystify." I think a lot of us in this room were taught that poetry was something mysterious, and that if you didn't have an encyclopedia and a book of Greek mythology, you might just as well not even try to read it all. And that certainly was the case with me when I was in my school, except I had a fortunate occurrence. There was an old gentleman in New Hampshire named Robert Frost, who would come down once a year to our high school, sit in our armchair, and growl a few poems to hear your comments. But he was a magic person. My experience with the students are, they are willing, anxious to learn, fairly willing to look at me not as a fossil, but as a possible source of amusement. And I think the experience that I want to leave with you was one I had in an early poetry class. I was paired up with a co-captain of the Concord High School football team. He wasn't on the football, he was on the football team, he wasn't a co-captain yet, but he was big, and he was strong, and he was tough, and Patty had the brilliant idea of saying, "I want you guys to act out a poem, and I want you to pick the poem yourself." I want you guys to act out a poem, and I want you to pick the poem yourself. So the poem we chose was an Emily Dickinson. Which I will recite to you because it's short enough that I can still remember it. A bird came down the walk, he did not know him, I saw. He bitten an angle worm in half and ate the fellow raw. So Andrew and I acted this out. I was the angle worm, he was the bird, and he broke me in half. Anyway, this is a wonderful program, and we're all lucky to have.
Thank you so much, yes.
Dr. Valian, thank you for having the wisdom to foresee what could happen 10 years down the road.
Well, you know what they say, even a blind pig finds an acorn now.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, just, yeah, we should probably get back to that. I just want to thank you again for Partners in Rhyme for coming and sharing that with us. That's the kind of stuff that we love to hear about here. Would love to see you expand it, that, those grants go there. That's fun.
More of that.
Yes, exactly. And we did just get one late public comment form, so we will squeeze in a last public comment. Gail Hayer, come on up. You can come up to this chair here.
Just got back from school vacation and thought about making my questions rhyme, but after I took you down, but I won't. I just saw the agenda and I saw on there a bunch of files that you're gonna review, one of them being the security cameras in schools. And I just had some questions. You don't need to answer these now, it's just something I wanted folks to think about. And it kind of follows along the gentleman's discussion earlier about technology. Basically, I was just wondering, so the policy says August 2015, has it changed since it was adopted in 2015? Where is there no reasonable expectation of privacy? I mean, I tell my child, there is no reasonable expectation of privacy like anywhere, you know, unless you're in your home. And I hope that children feel, you know, free to express themselves in the classroom. And I would hate them to worry about being videotaped and, you know, someone might watch it. So that's what I thought of when I read this. What procedures are in place to prevent hacking and parental access to videos of their children? I've heard that, you know, parents communicate with their kids on the cellphone all day long. And then I just felt like, you know, recordings should be viewable, should not be viewable online or via web access by anyone just to prevent, you know, hacking, I guess. So basically, I just think, you know, the privacy of students should be a priority when you're thinking about security cameras in schools. So I have my comments written down, the policy here, so I'll leave those with you.
Okay. Thank you, that's great. And we will be, that's our first reading of, you asked whether they've been reviewed. This is part of the policy review process.
Okay.
So we will be looking at them and reviewing them later in the meeting.
Okay.
Feel free to leave those comments, that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and now we get to Amy and Luda.
I guess I'll start with a couple quick ones. So recently was states for the winter track and field or indoor track and field teams. And the girl is actually in first in the state, which is extremely exciting. And William Chaffin, you've probably heard of numerous amounts of time when it comes to cross country.
Carlisle boy.
Very true.
Just saying, yeah.
Um, he came in first in the two mile. I don't remember his time exactly, but I'm sure it was phenomenal. And.
I saw, it was like nine and a quarter or something. Because I remember seeing it and thinking, I could barely go over one mile in that little.
He actually has broken the top 10 nationally with that run.
Wow.
So it's pretty exciting stuff.
And Emma Creamough, she's a junior on the girls' team, and she is currently holding second in the state. Everyone's eager to see her hold first next year, since first right now is a senior from Newton South, so we're hoping that. And also coming up soon on March 4th, which is a Wednesday or a week from tomorrow, actually, at 6:00 PM is the multicultural food fest. I believe it's an annual event, and we hope that there's a lot of volunteers willing to share pieces of their culture, and hopefully it's delicious.
So then rehearsal for the spring musical just started before break, so it's 9:00 to 5:00 this year. And I believe shows are open on Mother's Day weekend.
And we actually wanted to open up the conversation, and we wanted to know what specifically you all wanted to hear from us. And I think the start of the second semester would be a lot. Obviously, every single year, it's always midterms, and then a tragedy hit the community. And there's also a lot of other stuff going on, especially for Amy and I. We actually ran into each other at February break in Atlanta on a college tour as juniors. So, yeah, I think that's, like, we just wanted to open up the conversation and really get some stuff done with you guys and that.
I think personally, that my, those things that you describe are great. We don't have a way to actually get some inside information of what really bothers people around school. Well, being, you know, as you said, you were hit by a tragedy. So the statistics that you give, that we want here, we want there, it's all important. But for me personally, it would be extremely interesting, you talk to people your age group and stuff, come with the nice things and the less nice things, and actually open them up for our knowledge because you're our spies.
Well, I guess we can touch on something because obviously we're both in Student Senate.
Right.
And last night, we talked about, we had a very long conversation about the, what we felt were the top two most prevalent issues, and that was parking and student stress. Do you want to start touching on one of those, or?
Yeah.
So you need too much park. Too much power.
Yeah, there's just too many spaces on the floor. So, yeah, there's a lot of people, there's the general added stress that the current parking situation adds on to the already very stressful, like, student life. And how that's kind of been, like, have you asked so many people at the school, mostly juniors, I would say, and sophomores, if they have any big issue, most people would probably say parking is their current number one issue.
And I think, well, today was actually announced over the loudspeaker in the morning that Mr. Hannah said if you are parked in the lot illegally as a junior, move your car in the next 15 minutes or you're gonna get towed. And all of a sudden, you just, you could feel the amount of stress. And I was sitting in math class, and I could probably hear like the heart beating of like this kid sitting around me because it was either, I had some friends who actually just ended up going home because they park on what we call the hill, which is right in front of the memorial field, the football field. It tends to be that seniors who get assigned parking, they're like, oh, I want to walk up from the hill in the morning, I'm just gonna park in the lot. And in the end, it just, towards like the end of the first month, it just becomes empty. So juniors end up taking the spot, it's on the hill, and it doesn't really become an issue until some juniors end up parking in the lot, and then seniors will say, oh, there's a car parked in my spot. Like, I don't know what to do. And obviously, it's an issue, but I think what really kind of frightened me this morning was when some of my friends ended up just leaving school and they went home because they were so worried about getting their car towed, and they were also just, they're like, I don't have time to move down to Laurel Street. Laurel Street fills up around like 7:40.
Yeah, like 7:40, 7:45 would be full.
Yeah, it's full, and then you would have to walk up back up to your class, and by that time, you're late to class. And I think also it was a half day Tuesday, so it was, there was a little bit more like, well, what's the point? And just that whole feeling this morning was just kind of alarming for a lot of kids. And I think the tough situation with parking is, obviously towing is such an inconvenience. It's a bit, it's a big distraction, you know, like a lot of kids will look down from their classrooms and they see a car getting towed. You're like, oh my god, boy, like a car is getting towed, so.
So you're student leaders, and I would urge you to do an exercise in civil education. There is a very good chance that in town meeting, there'll be a discussion and an article, a one-time article about the party. There'll be many people that will speak against it because of all kinds of considerations. And I think it'd be an excellent exercise if there'd be many students from the high school that will stand there and will talk and will describe and will convince the community to actually listen to you. And when you do it, you have to always think, if we're doing an exercise in civil education, remember what will be said against the party and tackle those questions. Why don't you use the buses? Why don't you car share? Why don't you do other things that are being offered in the community?
Yeah, I think.
So just something simple.
I think as like a Student Senate, we're trying to gather a bunch of people who are 18 to go because of actually under-18, you can't, so you can tell meetings.
And you have to. Yeah, so just, I'll just add a little bit because I met with the Student Senate once on this, and they invited Mr. Mestru and I back for another conversation. I think to do exactly what you're talking about is figure out what their options are for civically engaging.
I was not aware.
Yeah, and also we're trying to.
I was, I'm 18 and not allowed to speak.
Yeah.
So it's fine.
It was aware, you're not allowed to vote, but not allowed to speak.
Yes.
We're trying to, we talked about, you can also add on to this if I'm incorrect. We're trying to also see if maybe you can hand out like flyers outside, because, um.
Or just talk people outside if they're going in.
When they're going in, just trying to get the attention out there, because, I mean, Amy and I aren't able to vote in that either. I'm also not from Concord, so.
Right, it's in most communities, so.
It's most.
So you can talk to the moderator, the town Concord moderator, and she does allow exceptions for students under 18 to speak. She usually asks one to represent the younger students, the juniors, which would be obviously important people.
You should identify those seniors that are currently seniors that already by the date of the town meeting are 18. I'm sure that there are.
Have to register to vote, I think.
Do they have to meet, you know?
No, they don't.
Why do they have to be registered voters?
With the moderator's permission, someone else can speak.
Correct.
And she will not ask you if you're advocating one way or another necessarily. She'll ask, can you help inform people at town meeting with your opinions? Because that's what everybody does, is inform others with their opinions.
Another thing is that you cannot maybe speak in town meeting, but you can write to the Concord Journal and to the mosquito. And at the end of the day, even in this committee, it was a very tight vote about the.
Yeah, a lot of.
And you know, and it will come for another vote to the 24th of March, you know? So you have to, you know, you have to add. There's a chance that's for another vote.
Yeah, there's, I don't know what the next one is.
Oh, because we said that we bring it to decide whether we continue with it or not. Well, doesn't matter, there is a chance, right, right? So you have to actually be proactive about voicing your opinions to the town, to us.
Well, I want to thank you for what you said earlier, which was, how can you be useful to the school committee? And I think Mr. Ehrlich said it very well. In addition to the kinds of information you share with us, if you can give us a better sense of the climate of the school with you being positioned to tell us what it feels like. Are people happy? What are we happy about? Are we not happy? What are we not happy about? It's a big, complex institution with well over 1,000 people. And you're a critical barometer for us to what's going on, just as you were tonight.
And I think the way you teed it up, saying here are the two biggest issues that we just talked about at the Student Senate, to me is a terrific path to do that. Because to bring that up for us to know that the two big issues you were talking about are parking and stress is, that's critical for us to know. So I love that you came here with the idea, with the question of how can we engage more? And I personally, before we even dive into either of these, would say that would be terrific. I think long-term, every time of the year, I think that would be great if you could tell us what are the big things you've been talking about at the Student Senate? What are the things that are going well and not? What are the challenges? What is it that you guys are wrestling with or celebrating about either way? Would be great for us to know. I think that'd be terrific, very helpful.
And not every, not every student in that high school will agree with what you singled out to talk about in terms of general climate kinds of ideas, but we trust you, and you're here for a reason, so.
Yeah.
So before, before I actually say one more rule, they're allowed to come and actually fill in a blue form and speak here.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly, certainly.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm speaking about here. The other way, you know, if you care, say, if people, the Student Senate, you know that people care about something, you have to show it to us. You know, it's not very late at night, come here, fill the blue form, check the agenda. Today, we have an agenda, and in the next meeting of the region, we have an agenda. A big question about the international trips. You know, the committee has a very heated discussion about it. Come and tell us, what do you expect from these trips? What do you want to see? What do you think about the questions of equal access that we're talking here? You know, we're, honestly, we're here to serve you. School committee, by the charter, is to serve the student body of the community.
Um, I.
So come with demands, come with opinions, be proud.
Um, I don't know how long I'm allowed to even continue dragging the song because I understand, obviously, you guys have a schedule. But I did want to, since you brought up school trips, I feel like this year, because you guys had to juggle and tackle that, this year has seemed kind of different than what I've experienced my other two years, especially with stuff like the China trip getting canceled, and obviously, that's out of our control. And it's extremely unfortunate that the coronavirus was a terrifying outbreak in the country of China. But I think right now, and I apologize if this is inappropriate with this being brought up, but with some certain situations going on with the staff at CCHS, a lot of us are wondering, like, what's gonna happen with some of these trips? And I don't want to go into specifics, I assume that Dr. Hunter, a lot of you know what I'm talking about. And I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that there's a lot of questions up in the air as students.
Uncertainty.
Yes, yes.
Which is never.
Right, exactly.
And obviously, it's not, it's never easy. We can't just give like one answer to students and then happily, oh, okay, and then move on with it. But it's definitely, it's definitely something that's up in the air right now.
Yeah, and it's been an odd year. I think we've had a lot of conversation here, but on the other side, we've had four trips canceled for multiple reasons.
Yeah.
So there has been a lot of different things. I can, I think we can understand the uncertainty.
Definitely.
I think that's important feedback to us.
Yeah, not in fact, not inappropriate at all, very helpful for us to hear.
So, yeah, I have questions on, not so much that part, but what, I mean, my daughter, who's a freshman, is zero help on this. So I get no real direct input, I'll just reference that. And she's zero help, I think, because it's not really on her radar. And she's aware of the trips, but it doesn't register well. She's a freshman, okay, so. But I am curious about, are the trips considered desirable? Is there a feeling of, and I ask you openly, is there a have and have-not feeling about those who can afford to take the big trips and not? I don't have any idea.
I think for the most part, they are desirable because a lot of times it connects to some of your learning in school. Like, I went on the trip to Germany last year, and it was like connecting what I learned in literacy that year to actually seeing it. And then there was like an earth science trip that you can actually experience things firsthand. So I think that, like, a lot of times, like, trips, do students feel like an opportunity to expand their learning and expand like their resources to what they are actually able to see firsthand?
And I went on the earth science trip last year to Switzerland, and I, and no exaggeration can say that it absolutely changed my life. When I go outside, I actually like to enjoy it now. And I think when it comes to your point about the awareness of like financial aid and like kids who can't afford as much as, you know, like the other kid, it is something that a lot of people are aware of. I think when it comes to trips, a lot of people are looking forward to it because we always hear, oh my god, I heard that one's so cool, I want to go. And my friend, she went on a freshman year trip with, I don't remember where it was, like, I believe it was in Eastern Europe. And she actually got to visit Auschwitz, and her family is Jewish. And for her, it was something that her parents weren't willing to take her to. So to go with the school and to have kind of like a community with her and her fellow peers and her teachers over there to like kind of guide her along with it. And also, obviously, there's other students there who are more impacted by the occurrences of the Holocaust than others. I think it's just such an important experience, and the fact that we are able to gain access to it as a community is absolutely amazing, and I would not want to get rid of it.
Like, I had a similar experience when I went to Germany because we visited Duck House, and my dad's family, my dad's Jewish. So like, that's like Germany and Austria, and those are two countries where no one in my family has ever been. It's because I don't really feel comfortable going there. So like, being able to go in my school and be able to like see it all was like a really interesting experience and that I'd never be able to experience probably without it.
Just want to point to you, listen to life for me, I not speak for the community. It's usually the what you think that is inappropriate that is actually helping the most important discussion. So keep on being, not afraid of being inappropriate.
Definitely.
I I just wanted to add that we hear about the uh kids, uh kids' experience, student experience at CCHS from administration through presentations about programs, but we don't really get the view of the students, the student experience. So you guys are that window for us to seeing how those programs are working and um what you guys wanna see more of, how they're impacting your your learning. So I commend you on asking the question and coming and uh most of all, being active and coming to those meetings. Because as you can see, I don't necessarily coming and listen, so I really commend you on that.
I would say another thing that we talked about a lot at the last senate meeting was just the way that we think that stress management is being handled in the school and whether it's the at this point in our like school life, whether the way it's being handled is the correct way and actually helping students become less stressed and helping them deal with the stress they have. And just what methods can be done that could actually better like help students be less stressed just throughout high school.
Mm-hmm, and I think someone pointed out that she has a sister in fourth grade and they do mindfulness every single day. And having that implemented at a young age and taking that on with you as you start to get into more challenging aspects of your life where you have more priorities and more responsibilities is very important. But I can probably say that the whole student senate agreed that, I'm sure you're familiar with the advisory.
Mm-hmm.
Thing that we have at the school, once a week, roughly twenty minutes. And watching videos of rain and asking us to just sit there silently, think about mindfulness doesn't really work to reduce our stress because in the end, our stress is completely derived from our workload. And whether or not it was our choice to do it or we feel obligated to do it because, oh, like Amy's an AP bio, so I feel like I have to take AP bio. Or sometimes parents pressure their kids to do it. Yeah, we're just, I mean, I can't.
I'm giving you.
I mean, I, um, but in the end, maybe that's not the best way to handle it. And I think that was something that was really wrong.
Yeah, I heard you out clear when I was with you and that 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 feedback has been passed on about mindfulness. So we need to keep these lines of communication really wide open.
Absolutely. Definitely ask for it.
Yeah.
Hitting a really new point, uh and I'm glad you guys have already had follow-up conversations even since I met with you a couple of weeks ago. It's a new way to listen to each other and hear the impact of what we're actually trying to do and be sure we're really getting to the root causes of things and not just the symptoms. And I think their their empowerment tonight is what we need. And I think I heard that from the rest of the kids as we spoke and got, I guess, tragedy sometimes from a dot opportunity. And in some ways, that's what played out in the hour I was with them that um and will continue to play out with the other adults around them that think we're having a lot more genuine conversation as you can experience. So one that we all wanna continue to heart for sure.
Right.
Is 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 the student senate, do do administrators or teachers, anybody, any adults typically sit in or is it just closed?
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Uh, we have um obviously faculty advisor, which is um Miss MC honors county teacher at the school.
By invitation? Okay.
Yeah.
So um and I think that's, she's always.
I guess as they'd invite you if you were.
Yeah, I think you definitely, yeah, we definitely want people to come in and bring and voice our opinion.
Definitely love to hear that. But also, I mean, when you reach those conclusions, like you just alluded to the maybe some good things and maybe not so good things about the administration's approach to uh reducing stress. Is there a vehicle to go back to Mike and the administration or is it Mr. Mistrillo, I should say? Uh um or is is what's the mechanism after that beyond your, you know, own internal deliberations about?
So we got an invitation to attend their next, a meeting with them in the next couple of weeks. I think they feel welcome to invite us in and tell us what they're thinking. That's the offer we've proposed and actually, we were invited the day before yesterday to talk on what they're wanting to have us here.
I know, but this was uh David's question, question whether we really have an ongoing way to actually, after you deliberate and you have things that bother you, to actually transmit it to the on a time basis to the the institution.
Yeah, no. I think that's what we're building, right?
It sounds like that's what it is, is bringing.
Yeah, why don't you make a answer?
More aggressive.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna be honest, I don't really know how to answer that. I'm kind of, um, it's always hard because we as students, we can probably detect some prevalent issues, but you don't get an answer right away, you don't always get a solution right away. You know, we have a parking issue, oh, just go learn a new parking lot. That's just, that's just not, that's not a quick solution. Oh, well, kids are stressed. That also opens up a, that's more prevalent to um from freshmen all the way to seniors because, you know, freshmen can't drive. But in the end, I don't really know how to answer that question.
Yeah, I feel like that's just a bit, I feel like, I feel like all the things that cause a stress currently would be, it's hard to be like a super quick fix to. I feel like this, the problem is like, it's like things like getting a lot of homework, but then they, you can't just say, give us less homework because they give us like this, they, the teachers do try to give us like as little homework as they can, but then eventually it's a class like math who needs to do a lot of practice for it every night. You can't just not give any of that. So I feel like someone brought up an interesting point last night at the meeting was that like like starting stress management techniques young.
Yes.
To help that, and I feel like when we were at middle school, in middle school, we weren't really taught that. And now they're trying to teach us to it now, I think it's almost like a little late to like teach it to us. I feel like maybe even going forward or we started kids younger, helping them deal with their stress because like that could help kids now.
That's a great observation, yeah.
Is is the senate, do you serve one-year terms?
Yeah.
And there's a mix of all classes are represented or just something like that? Um, and do typically people run for multiple years or is it turnover?
I've been in a standard since I was a freshman.
Cuz one of the things we talk about here, we have somewhat analogous situation that we run for three-year terms and they are staggered. So we get, we get at least get a few years, but it's different makeup all the time. And some of the issues that we are also tackling are big issues that will take more than a year to fix. So I think um and we can improve quite a bit as well in terms of not being too anxious to solve the problem inside a year, but set the stage for a a a longer-term fix that may take. People will change, you know, the people, the makeup will change, but I'm glad to hear that people run for multiple um terms because what we would call institutional memory is pretty important. In other words, knowing what happened, having that context and bringing it forward to the next year. So, you know, my unsolicited advice to you is some of these really big issues, set the stage. It's already the spring, so you're not gonna fix everything, you know, for next year. But if you set the stage, then you can frame that as a centerpiece for the next year's group and, you know, kind of like that. So I think it's great and it's really important to tackle those big issues that I would say, coming them out, mindfulness at age sixteen or seventeen is not too old.
I mean, it sounds like you are setting that stage and by inviting the administration in, Dr. Hunter, Mr. Mistrillo, that is a great way to bring your issues to them and to jointly talk about steps and.
Yeah, I think that'd definitely be helpful if you guys came in once in a while. Cuz I feel like yesterday we were talking about it and we were supposed to talk it for half the meeting and then we ended it for the entire hour
Yeah, the last year.
for talking about how parking and stress for we can, for.
That'd be great, I'm sure that some of us would love to come to your student senate meeting here and there.
We can. Might as, might as well come.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, about us.
Yeah, if you, if you can let us know when they are and we can figure out, you know, we won't comment once if they do, but that would be great.
Yeah.
Comes.
And thank you, let's con, let's continue this conversation, this is very valuable.
Absolutely. Yeah, and um, so we have some, I know there's um an individual committee talking about this. We have something at the high school called assigned testing days. And um I think obviously the initial goal of it was to debunk stress. And it's the idea that um before the quarter ends or before a break, um certain subjects were allowed to test on certain days. And it was to, in order to prevent, so I don't have three tests in one day.
Mm-hmm.
And.
I think it's a good idea.
It had the right intentions.
Yeah, they were like, but like unfortunately in application, there are, it does create some more issues.
Yeah, and I think the issue is that sometimes my, I don't even see the frustrations within my teaching role. They're like, oh, we can only test on this day, so even though you guys have to move on to the next unit before the test, we can only test on this day and it's, it's just so frustrating. So I'm like, why can't we just test on this day? Oh, no, we can't, we have this assigned testing day. And it's a lot with like, just trying to, I understand the intentions and at first I'm like, oh, that makes sense. And then now that I'm a junior, I'm like, I hate this.
Yeah, actually, I think a year or two ago, we first, we made like this thing called the testing bill in senate, which was like this thing we put together on how we think we should kind of change up the way they structure the end of the quarters and the end of like before break. But then I think I'm I'm not really entirely sure what happened to it, but I think it was shot down.
Yeah.
It's a little, it was asked in San last year, the testing bill, we're like, yeah, I got this.
Well, it sounds like that's all good feedback to share. I know if the if the STEAM teachers were here, they would tell us in every process, right? You you build a model, you test it out, you see what's working and not, and then you go back and you rework it. So it sounds like we're in the midst of a process um that's that's not always working perfectly the first time, but that's how, that's how we get to solutions, right?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
And I I think it sounds like this is teed up for a discussion and.
Yeah, I have, I met with another group of kids last week and that was just brought to my attention too.
Okay.
So we're, we are starting to get.
Yeah, that's great.
The structures to get the feedback, which I think is really important.
That's important.
Right, and that's that's important. Okay, good, well, thank you for bringing this up this night.
Very good. Yes, absolutely.
And of course, stay as long as you want. And at any time, obviously, I know these meetings get late, but if there are items that you want to comment on in our meetings, um by all means, either stay for them and and join the discussion as we're having it, or if you don't wanna stay that late and you just wanna throw us a comment about a an agenda item later so that we can take it into account when we're discussing it, that, you know, that's always welcome.
I agree.
Thank you.
So thanks for that, that's great.
All right. Yes.
All right, so we better get moving on.
Thank you, Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so for for bringing all that up.
Thank you.
Um, we have some minutes, do you want me to call for Concord, let's let's do Concord first, just so we can get minutes out of the way? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February fourth, two thousand twenty?
Same route?
Second.
Any discussion of those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed on those?
I don't know.
Are you abstaining then? Okay, then, three in favor, one abstention. Give some joint minutes.
Uh, yep, we have the joint minutes from January seventh, sixteenth and twenty-first. We'll take them as a group unless anyone feels otherwise. We have a motion to.
I moved to approve them, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um.
As executive, as a regional.
Those are all joint.
Okay. So we also have a pile of executive session minutes, again, from October twenty-second, December eighteenth, January seventh, January sixteenth, January twenty-first. Unless there's disagreement, we'll take them as a motion to approve as a group.
So moved.
Second. Are, do you want, are those moved and seconded for both committees?
Correct.
Okay.
Were they joint or were they?
They were joint, not just regional, so so it's all, so both committees have to approve those.
Oh, okay. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those in favor, oh, what?
All right, I should both.
All those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Erin.
Yes. Chair and liaison, do you, anything you wanna touch on as regional chair today?
No, Erin.
Um, then, let's move into, I don't have it being as Concord chair, but quick liaison reports. And we'll keep this quick only because we don't have a Concord section later to talk about middle school. Just do a very quick update, um kind of a liaison update on where we are in the middle school. The couple highlights are that we've been talking timeline recently. Um, the building committee has been discussing the timeline basically of when a town meeting, special town meeting would be next fall and then the follow-up ballot vote. It, the building committee recommended a timeline that would not have the ballot vote fall on the presidential election. The thinking behind that was to give people enough space to understand the question well without it being buried in the presidential election. The flip side of that, however, was discussed at the uh select board last night. Um, and their opinion at this point is that because the presidential ballot brings out so many people that that's better to have more inclusion in that vote here. So at this point, they are leaning towards a schedule um that would have the ballot vote for a new middle school be on the same day, the same ballot as the presidential primary, sorry, the presidential election. It's in my words. Um, they, all of that, we we can still do that and hit our construction start date if we um also have a warrant which would fund continued design work in between the special town meeting, assuming it passes there, and the eventual ballot votes. So all of that is moving forward as such. Um, other things, we've been moving along, design discussions, uh the last building committee meeting, um, the the committee was presented site options, placement on the site. And then the design subcommittee discussed various design concepts. All of those uh will be discussed again this week, so this Thursday morning, the full building committee meets and we'll look at the design concepts. Um, uh then Thursday evening, big date, everybody, announcement, we're having another public forum about the middle school. Um, this is really when, again, we are still on a stage of wanting feedback and input from the community on priorities. So if you have thoughts and input on what you think a middle school should look like, please come Thursday evening at seven o'clock at the pebitty building of the middle school, of the public forum then. As always.
You know, the public forum in the Crowe building, that I've almost wanted.
Exactly, just to remind you, the library is. Um, as always, if you can't be there but want to send feedback, you can send feedback on the middle school at any time to our email, which is MSBC, Middle School Building Committee, MSBC at ConcordPS.org. Um, and the last little announcement here is that um the communications subcommittee of the middle school building committee is looking for volunteers who might wanna help with social media, with writing, with posting, with um all kinds of basically feet on the ground helping us spread the word and collect feedback um regarding the middle school. So if you have any interest in communications and you wanna help do some writing and and communicating with us, please uh let us know. Again, the email address, MSBC at ConcordPS.org, you can just send a note to there and it'll get to me um for communications volunteers. I think that's all the updates, did you miss anything?
Didn't miss anything, I think that covers it, uh but I would like to simply uh add one note about Thursday night. And that is that uh we're the community very eager to see uh possible concepts. Uh, how many students are gonna see the treetops? How many students are gonna experience a bridge over the ravine? Uh, which is fun work to do and to discuss. Uh, I think we're gonna be hesitant about doing very much of that because we still wanna hear uh community comments about what purposes and functions this should serve before we get too mired in possible shapes and sizes.
That's right.
I think having spoken with the leadership team and the design and OPM groups uh yesterday to plan for the forum, we did, we're trying to balance the feedback we got last time to really get some visuals and content to respond to. So there is a plan to expose people to the very preliminary, high-level possibilities at a thirty-thousand-foot view. So to your point, not down in the, just to see that there's some conceptual pieces starting to come together.
So we need to make that caveat very clear.
Yeah, and we will do that at the beginning of the meeting for sure.
Good, good, thank you.
Um, that's the middle school update. And usually I have a League of Women Voters update, but last time you went for me. So I'll let you report on that one.
And uh and uh they're very attentive to this, uh as they should be. And I can't tell you offhand, future meetings, they have planned around this.
Yes. Okay, no, that's fine. Okay, great, great. Um, are there liaison reports to share?
The policy subcommittee meets again this Thursday at ten AM and those items will be looked at.
Is it ten or nine thirty, Erin?
Nine thirty.
Forgive me, thank you, thank you, nine thirty uh in this room, uh and that's a public session.
May I? Uh, just as an announcement, so one of the things that we will be talking about will be gender identity with a specific question. Can I, is it, is it okay to actually explain the question?
Sure.
No, I don't know, I don't know what the subcommittee's rules. Which, cuz it could be interesting if people from the community that have an interest will come to speak here. So the main thing we're going to to tackle about gender identity is the question whether they should be in order for things to have. there should be, in order for things to happen in school about gender identity in transition, there should be a specific, eh, help me, eh, as, as a prerequisite, authorization from parents or not.
So, and I've got legal feedback to share when we meet? So we're clear, clarifying more of the nuance of the way the law is.
It's a very significant question to the community, whether there should be a clear approval from parents or can school can actually act upon the, eh, interest or interest of the, of the child or the will of the child without parent consent. It's a big question, the question that is now in courts in many states.
We're being advised by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and their legal counsel and their expert on policies. And, uh, some of the policies that we adopt, uh, we can adopt them wholesale, uh, because they've been so, uh, fairly tested. Um, other ones, uh, just as would be the case with case law considerations, uh, decisions have to be made about, uh, what, what words, uh, go into print and, uh, determine, uh, actions that follow policies. So this is one for Thursday morning.
Yeah. So.
Thanks. Any other liaison reports? Right, then moving on, uh, correspondence. I think we just, excuse me, had one media request that you took care of. Sorry, just, okay, yes.
So.
Right?
Okay, sorry, I'll take over. Any correspondence?
Yeah, that's what I was, we actually bring it up, we have a.
Well, I mean, off the lead, since I've already referenced it, there was a media request that came through to the committee regarding personnel situation that we have responded to and also notified the community about within the guidelines of what we're allowed to say. So I think it's appropriate to leave it at that for tonight, but we're happy to acknowledge that that has gone out and that there's been a response from us in terms of what's happening.
So I do have to comment about it, please. So the, it's not the first time, I think, there's the, the episode that happened in the question of the journalist happened months ago. And we, the administration waited to, for an announcement to the community until they were pushed by the, the reporter. And at the end of the day, we all know that for months, there are rumors about it. So all I'm saying is not about this, but in general, I think, as, as I claimed before I was on school committee, it's much better to actually let community some kind of announcement and not let rumors go around without actually.
So we notified directly the families of the children, students that were first impacted. Immediately, they were notified and we left it to that very purposefully, trying to balance the needs of the community for information and the privacy rights of the individual involved. And those will always be the balancing acts that we act upon under the guidance of our legal counsel and through the, um, legal consults we have with the teachers' union and others around us. So it's very precarious and it's very challenging and transparency, we believe in strongly, but we also have legal obligations to the staff when issues happen, that their privacy is protected and we must abide by that or we are vulnerable and we make them vulnerable. So, um, we've had a lot of positive feedback in how we've managed this particular situation. I think there's a sense of trust that we're sharing appropriately and responsibly. And that's the goal, so, um, it's challenging, it's very challenging.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mark.
Any other correspondence to discuss? Okay, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be brief since we're running late tonight. Uh, do you want to, before I mention what I wrote in my report, I'm just going to reference, uh, the coronavirus and our efforts around that, given the ongoing discussions in the media and locally for sure. Uh, we are in regular contact with the Concord Board of Health. I've had two updates from them in the last two days. Um, as the CDC is pushing information out there, engaging with us directly and immediately. We are following CDC guidelines now and we will continue to follow, um, those of the bodies that govern us and make decisions that are safe for kids. Um, so right now, I think we feel comfortable with where we're at. Um, we're grateful right now the impact is spread from us. We, part of the notice today was say that everyone in this country should expect it won't stay as far spread away from us as it may be currently and we're all just going to keep, um, attentive to that. We're working with the nursing staff as well and have answered individual questions as they come up. So we will share more as we have it, if something different change, different happens or a broader response starts to happen, but I feel like we're as attuned as we need to be to feel responsible. So, um, just a few other highlights, I'll reference our ongoing response to the suicide tragedy earlier in the month. Um, we're working continually with Riverside Trauma and starting to talk about some, some, some sort of community group that may form. We're meeting with AB Cares this week to hear what their, their setting looks like. Um, we need to make it a Concord Carlisle appropriate, uh, version of that, but we're trying to gather information. Uh, we're also, I think, as the, uh, high school kids so eloquently said, we're doing that review work and want to look at the efforts we have to date and their impact and effectiveness and what do we need to add and change. There is an advisory committee already in the works to look at the effectiveness of that program. The voice of the kids is critical to making sure the changes are the right changes. Uh, and we will continue all of that. Uh, educator evaluation, uh, we have provided formative assessments to the non-professional staff at the, uh, pre-K to 8 level. Uh, the SAG High School staff receives theirs March 1st and we continue to work really collaboratively with the evaluators and, uh, I think have a much broader umbrella and support base for them while they work with the teachers directly. Uh, the innovative learning committee, uh, developed a tentative process for mini-grant applications to start next fall. Um, we're trying to seed money for teachers with a new idea they want to try and they need a little startup cash to get that started, that we can support those efforts. So the process is what we're figuring out now, so then by the spring we can be actively soliciting ideas from teachers. Uh, inclusion and cultural competency, we had our second full district day of professional development this afternoon with the pathways continuing for another round and having walked through probably six of them. Really deep, great work going on there, all connected to threads of the strategic plan, whether it was how to support autistic kids or, um, how to teach in an engaging foreign language classroom, which, of course, I didn't understand a word, but I still enjoy the fun they were having. Um, there's just a lot of really, really important work going on and it was just great to see everyone mixed up together and collaborating. Uh, I will add to the international there next week is followed in the evening by Mr. Joy, which is a, um, cultural competency themed, um, drama that we are hosting, uh, funded through a Metco grant that we're really grateful, we've been really able to benefit from some of the extended funding opportunities Metco is offering. Uh, so we'll hope people will come for the food and then stay for the show. And, uh, special education and student support, a youth group and I met with the CPAC board before the break and talked about budgets and the new middle school design. We were able to share some very concrete accessibility options that are out in other new buildings and make it, I think, tangible, which really allowed for a really, really great conversation and dialogue. Uh, school safety, we're doing something that I can't believe we haven't done before now to get an MOA in place with the Carlisle Police Department and make sure we have that same level of communication and, uh, ongoing discussions with them as needs come up. Um, so that'll be an important structural piece for us. In terms of sustainability, which is, we'll loop into the parking conversation, certainly as we have that later tonight, but we've been working with mothers out front who's gotten very hands-on and, um, willing to help and actively work on things, which has been fabulous. So we've done some parking, uh, some tra, some traffic data collection to better inform the parking needs at the high school through the support of the police. We borrowed one of their technology tools. Uh, we have a pre-K to 12 parent survey ready to go, it's in draft form and should go out shortly. We've met with some local bike leaders, um, who are looking to host activities later this spring on the high school campus to promote those alternative modes. Um, we've got a draft of a plan that's still, still in gray mode, but it's coming together that when we put out parking passes in the fall that, uh, we can prioritize kids who do some level of, this is the, this is the loop around the carpooling to then ask them to share spots and it's up to them how they do that. So we're still tweaking that, but we think that has, that has some feel that it could work. So we want to keep going with that. Today, I spent two hours with the department leaders here in town on the municipal climate action planning work that is going on. So the Concord's big picture plan meet, continues to help us meet those goals that we've set. Uh, the League of Women Voters and Rotary sessions we had, uh, in the last month were really well received and I'm always enjoying my time with them. And that was Center for Parents and Teachers who are very interested in being an active part of the response plan to our social emotional needs and specifically suicide prevention. Um, I'm also meeting with all the parent-teacher groups and the high school PA over the course of the month. Um, I have almost all of them scheduled. Uh, I'm going to be working with the League of Women Voters to promote the 2020 census. There's a lot of energy to be sure that word gets out and the format's changed. There's a lot of, there's electronic pieces to it this time, which sounds like it's a good thing and a time and place, but it's a big change, so we want to be sure we're engaged with that and there's a lot of curriculum work that could be part of that that we're, we're looking at and considering. On Friday, Court and I will be filming at Minuteman TV, um, to talk about, I guess, the warrant article specifically in the middle school and just where we are in those processes. And we're really enjoying more time with the seniors locally, so, um, poetry was a great example. The middle school hosted a breakfast a couple of weeks ago and I will be attending the annual, uh, St. Patrick's Day lunch on March 14. So one last little piece I'll just add, we worked with, through the, um, bike leaders in town that we collaborated with, um, they're connected with the, uh, the staff at the Umbrella who have been looking to have their bike racks donated somewhere. So we popped right on that and actually started to think we'd like to do that. Jared was over there today, today, uh, to look at the racks and we know right where we want to put them. Uh, we don't have a vote, this is all happened literally today. We don't have a vote on your agenda to formally accept the donation, but maybe we can strategize that so we can keep momentum and put it on the next agenda or something. But I wanted to mention that we're excited by the opportunity and what it'll do. Um, it seems like a win-win, uh, on that, so lots of good things going on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Couple of comments if I may. First of all, thank you, um, for the comprehensive report. And second, thank you for anticipating, uh, our desire for a reference to, uh, health issues. Um, and I think it's important to note that, uh, any normal precautions we take around, uh, wintertime influenza are simply the same now. They're exactly the same.
Yes.
Uh, there's, uh, some concern because, uh, uh, the coronavirus has a brand-new name for some folks, but precautions have been in place for a long time.
In fact, we're very active in all of that because the flu has come at us pretty aggressively in the past few weeks.
And all the public health authorities will tell us that's, that's the present threat. Um, question about innovative pedagogy, and that is, um, it strikes me that there might be some overlaps or synergy or something with the Concord Ed Fund because they sometimes get into that innovative space for us as well.
They very much do and actually, they were here today talking with us on some ideas because we're in the thick of that grant season. Theirs is a bigger project and these are going to be little micro projects. So we're targeting with the innovative committee and that process, say, $200 to $500 where CEF tends to fund things that are more.
Much more implementation, not testing.
And they often, one of their big hopes often is how many kids will be impacted, rightfully so. Um, and so things are often a little more of scale and we're purposely wanting to just give teachers a vehicle, vehicle to try something in their own little classroom with just their current kids and dabble and try, try things. While they're all aligned to the standards and all our curriculum and all of that, not, not too off track, but, um, it's the more how they deliver it than what, yeah. So thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and finally, I hope that in a future report, uh, we could, uh, take a, uh, closer look at equity audit plans for the future.
Yeah, I'd like to actually, I'm going to provide you an overview of all the survey work we're going to do because the equity audit isn't that mix. And now that we're into the second part of the school year, we're starting to pace how much you can actually get done in a year, so happy to give you that update on our plans.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay, then we're moving on to the Capitol article. And further discussion on that, as referenced, further discussion on the Capitol article. Um, do you want to walk us through what's?
I mean, I'll just open it and then I could, you all jump in on what your purpose is. What I interned, what I believe the purpose was to talk on, um, making sure that communities both felt informed on what we're proposing and then the why's, and starting to get that information up. So I think that's a conversation to, to start both.
And you sent some background of last?
Yeah, I did, just this afternoon, I sent you last year's presentation and handout, which are easily updated, so we'll work on that for you and, um, make sure you can give us feedback on what you'd like in those and make sure you're all.
So walk us through a little bit of last year in terms of who prepared it, you guys, I guess?
Yeah, it, um, it was collaborative, school committee and administration preparing those materials you saw.
And then how did you promulgate it? How did you go out?
The school committee signed up for a whole bunch of sessions and divided them up and took turns hosting.
So these are community sessions?
Yeah.
Just invite people after work kind of thing or doing?
Yeah, so, and I'm looking at Heather and Court as they were here.
Probably eight of them in total, some in the morning, some in the evening, none in the afternoon, as I recall.
Still across those communities.
You had talking points or just?
Yes, yeah, and, and listing points, you know, we wanted to, uh, get people's, uh, sense and sentiments about it.
What was the timing of that?
Uh, it was, I'm going to say.
Two to three months before.
Yeah, probably February through town meeting.
Our town meeting's very good, yes.
Late to you, that's, not on the road.
Right, late by our standards. Um, it was basically a road show. I mean, we just kind of pu, put lots of dates on the calendar, like, like Kurt said, mornings, evenings, and each of us signed up for different ones. And we presented the, the slides of information, um, and answered questions.
And basically it was, here's the proposal and here's where it came from.
Yeah, that's the PowerPoint. And then, did the other piece come out as a mailer or at its time or?
It didn't, I think we were talking about the options are. It was something that got handed out as a take, take-home from the presentation.
And emailed around someone.
I think we emailed it out to the community because it was more digestible, so I think we did some connect ads in the town email and things like that.
And, and did you proceed all that with, I mean, kind of already done this, but presentations to the select boards and the thing comes out to two towns? So have we finished that process already for this?
Um, no, we are still actively, we have, I don't have Carlisle dates, so I'd love to see if we could talk with them on what their hopes are. They usually invite us over on a certain date when they're running their public hearings. Uh, but we could go as a standalone agenda item too. Uh, we are on a public hearing docket here in Car, Concord, March 16th. It's that middle week in March.
Capitol articles.
The Capitol, all of the articles are there, so we will highlight everything, um, both budgets and the Capitol article.
Well, is the, so there's no, you know, I asked this before, but is there any Capitol article on the middle school right now?
No.
There's no schematics or?
No.
Okay, so this is it for schools?
This is it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've already been with the, we started a conversation with the Concord Finance Committee last week, so we would love to get on the agendas or?
I think you should just contact, I think, yeah, I think, uh, you can copy me, but I'm just.
Yep.
Let's just get on his calendar, because they get busy, they're busy at the doors. And I don't know if they care, they may say just wait for the, you know, hearing, but.
It's a nice.
It'd be better to reach out and anyway, it'd be better.
Yep.
If, if he says he can't, he doesn't have time till later, I would just, I know you're going to have community forums. You're not going to wait for those because I hope you got to get those.
Yeah.
And this is a pretty busy, as you know, of course, it's hardly getting people to come out. Because we've got our own master plan, we've got all kinds of stuff going on.
Yeah, well, and the same thing here, I mean, we're, we're going to be having a lot of public, you know, forums and events about middle school to help people both be informed and share their input. Um, I think we do want to think about it at this level, what do we want to do in terms of preparation for the town meeting votes themselves?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I'm confused about something because I, there was a, a split vote in school committee. It was a clear commitment to actually bring it as an ac, an action item, whether we continue with the movement article or not. Is this still on the agenda? We kind of tried to not do, you know, because I've seen, when I said it before, I've seen the Concord School Committee Chair and you.
No, I, I agree with that, I'm unclear on the timing of that.
Yeah, so the only, the only time.
I'm wondering if the chair's wondering what the timing is.
You know, it passed. You know, it passed, we're a committee, we move forward, I mean.
But it was not, there was actually a clear commitment to bring it.
Right. So I think it's, it's done, right? Now, now we're in roll out, aren't we?
That's not, that was not agreed.
Let me suggest this. I had hesitation about moving it forward. I was one of the people that had hesitation about it because I'm hearing all the arguments, as are you, and we each weigh them as best we can. At the conclusion of that vote where we decided by not a majority to move this forward, there were two.
By a majority, by a majority.
I'm sorry, yes, right, forgive me, I'm sorry. By not a unanimous vote is what I meant to say, forgive me. There were two clear sentiments. One was the school committee supports the school committee's action. And we'll move forward together as a body. And the second one was, and we can revisit this before the vote to reaffirm it. I don't think we used the reaffirm word, but that was clearly the implication. I do recall that too. And I think it would be wise to do that sooner, not later.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I voted to.
Well, time's not our friend here.
And I was the one that actually was, and I was always, you know, I didn't make any secret of the fact that I think that we need the parking. But at the same time, I think that we've committed ourselves to do something and we should find a way to do it. There is a record that clearly committed to bring it up for a second vote.
Absolutely. So I actually, I hear what you're saying, you all, I agree. I remember that we said, let's, you know, let's vote it forward and then we will come back and make sure that that's what we want.
There was a condition that we'll see that the administration or us will show that it's not going to be the same thing that happened before. And I think we should actually show it and revote. I personally, you know why? As I said, I think that we should do it because we promised us and we promised the community will do it.
I'm sorry, I don't think we said that we're going to revisit it because, because of the point that you always make. I think we were going to look at the sustainability piece first and then go back and.
Well, I think he's making that point, but just a different way. So, but I think what we have to say now is it's our last meeting in February. What day is town meeting?
April 27th.
And when is the warrant, what's the deadline on the warrant?
When is it?
It's early.
We would just not move it.
We can scroll.
Sorry, she said.
We've had some not preferable strategies in the past of not moving articles an hour before town meeting. So you've got time.
But let's not go to that.
Well, let's just okay.
It's not the way to do it.
Can I suggest, I thought we were kind of touching base on it tonight, actually, just to kind of see where we are. If this doesn't feel like enough, then maybe we put it on next time. I, my understanding, when we had this conversation, I agree with you, I remember clearly that we said, okay, let's reaffirm it, as Court said. My understanding of it was that we would touch on it again and kind of reaffirm. I don't know that it needs another vote.
Let's do that. Let's update these presentations because I know there's different and new ways we want to communicate the advantages that we, that the administration and the school committee sees in doing this. And any news sustainability initiatives, whether they're, you know.
Yeah, I can gather all of that in a really consolidated place.
And then maybe somebody can propose a set of dates that we would allow the company, the community to come in and talk to us about this, you know, sort of four days or something like that.
So this is not the outreach to them, this is them coming to see.
No, outreach to them.
This is what Court was saying. You're talking about the road show?
Yes.
In effect, yes. And that, in fact, starts Friday morning when Lori and I have agreed to discuss the warrant article.
But that's not it.
I think, I think, I think you're, that's our sharing information. I think you've captured it well. If we can update the presentation, we do everything that we discussed when we debated this at length.
Exactly. I think we have a better understanding of how we're proceeding.
How does it sit with sustainability objectives? How does it sit with efforts around management efficiencies that could squeeze out more out of that real estate called pavement at the parking lot at the high school or what have we done in the last year? What have been student experiences, same or different, all of that to update this. Because we all agreed, we are obligated, should we move this forward, which I think we clearly are going to, to not simply say, have another look at the same proposal under the same conditions. It's not going to be exactly the same proposal, it's not going to be the same conditions.
And I'd like them to be coffees.
And we're smarter now, we should be smarter.
If somebody has another topic, so be it.
So that applies on morning thing for a lot of parents.
Morning, evening, who work.
The phrase, yeah, morning, evening. So what about this, if I try to summarize as a plan, I think addresses.
I'm sorry, can we attach those sort of talks with an outreach to the community with opportunities where we already have the parents, like the multicultural, multicultural.
We're saying like more of a table thing.
Yeah, having a table and being actually where people are instead of making people come to us. I mean, we have, high school has plenty of opportunities for people to come to things that happen at the school
that's supposed to withstand the lone coffee at a table there.
Yes. I mean, we should not be imposing our schedule really. We should come out to the community as much as possible.
But then, yeah, I totally agree with you. Especially, but unfortunately, we won't have this ready by the time of the, we move forward.
By next week.
But yeah, we should look forward and see what's going on.
So do we have a timeline of when we're going to have that information, right, those presentations? Or at least some information that we deserve?
Next meeting, right?
Yeah, but next meeting is already in late March. I'm worried that we won't have. I mean, there's two schools of thought, right? The sort of, you know, national election school of thought is people make up their mind driving through the polls, right? So you kind of don't want to be too early. You want to do it when it's fresh. But on the other hand, the other school of thought is these ideas that is perfectly in their brain. So my own experience in town government is the latter. Like you have to kind of message for a while so people kind of get a chance to socialize it. And therefore, I think waiting for the next school committee meeting, if I'm correct, it's March 24th.
Well, could we have a quick joint on March 24th?
We could, but I mean, you know, I mean, the point is we should get on with it in the month between now and the next meeting, whether that needs a little meeting to bless the material is one thing, but I'm just, I don't think we should wait till, you know, the end of March.
We don't only have to go huff and spoke to get this stuff together unless it's just to, yeah.
Okay, so I get my next question before we keep going down the road of timing.
Yes.
Laura, you just said you could collect this stuff and put it into something. What's realistic?
Yeah, so while I've already looked at the presentation, so I think we're, we've moved that forward some. I feel that what I need to do is package the sustainability piece and the question of what's different and the ideas that are forming. And I'm going to be very honest with you now. The sustainability piece are the list of ideas and action steps we're planning on taking and the data collection we're doing and the different people that are at the table and some of that. So we can definitely take you all of that.
And I wouldn't get any weeds of that. I mean, this is not a carbon trading market, right? So I don't think you have to say, well, you know, we're creating this or we have to do that. I believe you should just say, look, sustainability is like a big picture thing. And while we recognize, just, you know, go square to it. Like we recognize that we're maybe adding to the carbon footprint of the campus regardless of what people do in town by adding parking, but, you know, we've got all these initiatives and we're committed to reducing our carbon footprint. Just like leave it at that. And the mix might change, but, you know, you spend your carbon credits on the things that are really important and the kids are saying, this is really important. You know, I think it doesn't have to be too complicated. I wouldn't avoid, I mean, I had a discussion this morning in Carlos' school about what I consider to be a sort of overly inside the beltway kind of discussion about what we're doing I P. The voters, we're much too in the bubble. The voters don't really, maybe Congress different, they don't want like so much granularity, they just kind of want to know, you know, you're taking care of.
I really get on the whole, the sustainable folks need a little more detail probably. So I'm going to try to hit that balance with one presentation.
Be an understatement.
So because we've been discussing this publicly and we said we want to, it's a little bit awkward to say we want to have a reclamation of this effort and now move forward with our road show and so I'm just trying to figure.
Well, we probably do need a meeting to bless, if you will, the material and get the talking.
I just want to say something about it and I promise not to ever say one more word to the record. At the end of the day, I think that as a school committee, we have to follow for the community what we promised the community to do. The understanding and previous vote was, cannot be understood in a different way. The idea was, and we spoke about creating a subcommittee that we did not do. And then we spoke about creating a task force that we didn't do. But at the end of the, it's us, it's us, it's not the administration, it's us that didn't do it. And at the end of the day, we promised, and I voted with the condition that administration will come and show us that we bring a different presentation to the community and that we will have a vote about continuing autonomy, schedule this vote in order to actually dictate a timetable for us and for the administration to come with ideas. Personally, I think we should do what we say that we do, but.
So I mean, I think we can do, I think that could be consistent. In other words, if you, if the administration packages an approach, they're hearing from us. I agree with Cynthia that, much as it pains me to say it, I think we, you know, need, no, no, that part doesn't pain me. I missed that. What pains me is to request another meeting. But I think, given the timing, you need to tell us when it's ready and we need to schedule a focused meeting.
Why not on the 24th, on the next?
I'm just worried, I mean, we could do, but then let's say it's the 24th, which means that the reach out is crammed. We have a school vacation and the 17th or something, right? So you've got three weeks basically to get it done. You got to get it done. Now, we could pre-schedule the coffees, if you will, without having the material ready. That's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe that's okay. I'm just saying we shouldn't be cognizant of timing. So, but I don't disagree with your approach. In other words, present, deliberate, vote. I wonder if we vote to move forward. I think talking points around those are in order.
Yes.
I would urge sooner, not later. Because I think that sends a message to the community, assuming it's a vote that's in support, probably a unanimous vote in support, but venture a guess from the previous discussions and votes. That sends a signal to the community that is a valuable one to precede.
Which is really, most of us are here the 10th anyway, so if.
But the proof's in the pudding, as Yuval says, it has to be abundantly clear that this is a different and more persuasive approach.
And, and you know, and if it is, maybe the three members that voted against, some of them would vote for and that would be a message to the community, yes?
So March 10th?
So a question, March 10th, are you both available to come for, you know, a section of it? It wouldn't be a full meeting because we have a Concord meeting planned up, right?
David, you're the one who has to do that.
Yeah, my wife, away, take care. The young, the young one.
Yes.
But if, as long as they have a kid, come, it's okay.
I'll be here. My question is, are the students also invited to come in and listen to this?
Listen to public meeting.
Absolutely. I think they're interesting, we would love to have.
Oh, they did contribute.
And contribute to the discussion. Yeah, I think I'll, can we keep the students also in a loop? So they are fully participating like parts.
I would, I would even encourage the administration to consult with them for the talking points.
Yeah, actually, that's what we're working on now is a meeting between now and putting.
Right.
David, so you said, if you cannot make it, if I understand right, once we have quorum, you can participate remotely and vote remotely. Once there is a quorum.
That's true.
I mean, it might be.
Right, you know, if, if we change it, so if there is a quorum, you can vote remote if you know the far side of the answer.
Sure, one person can participate.
Would you want to start with that compared to Lori? Yeah, start, start with the vision?
Yes, that's a good.
We can start with that, assuming that.
Especially that, there's people coming to make comments.
Yes.
Actually, we should ask.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, then that's our, okay, so to summarize, we are going to add a joint piece to the March 10th meeting. By then, we will have a revised presentation to look at. Does that make sense, Lori?
Yeah, oh yes, certainly like that.
And at that point, we will all confirm, reaffirm our decision to keep the warrant article on for town meeting.
Or not.
Or not, exactly. Sound like a plan? And following that, we will schedule some school committee coffees. I think to Cynthia's point, I was going to mention this also, I think we should have some coffees leading up to town meeting. This will likely be the biggest topic, but we should be prepared to answer questions about budget and anything else also.
So one suggestion I would make that was very effective last year, and somebody's going to wish I didn't do this because I'm asking you to do some work, but there were drafts of the coffee dates and times brought to the meeting. We didn't sit here and do it by scratch. That's what I'm saying, we should have them. So we could maybe try to strategize who could bring a draft of, then we were just filling slots, not deciding.
Does anyone work on a draft of, I want to work on a draft of coffee dates? Thank you.
I would, thank you.
Yay, I love that. Okay, wonderful. We have a plan.
When are you busy?
See, I'm free sometime in May.
Neurology and Peabody School, which is about a quarter mile from my house.
Right, right. Exactly. Okay, we've got a plan? Everybody's comfortable?
Yep.
Good.
All right.
Moving right along.
Move along to new business, first agreement of school committee policies. I turn it over to Mr. Booth.
Thank you. So the policies in front of you have gone through review by the policy subcommittee and I'm going to find that date, that was January 16th. And the conduct of school council business involves a relatively minor change, dropping, quote, removing the limitation of, quote, after school hours, unquote, from the text. The civil rights hate speech did not move forward.
Yes, Booth. And the meeting will be six times at least a year and not monthly as it was in the previous.
Okay, and that's already in the policy, is it not?
Yes, that's the.
We discussed the civil rights hate speech policy, still in progress. Also gender identity, we've referred to that earlier tonight. The file, let's see.
Security cameras.
I'm not seeing that in our minutes here. So the security cameras in school, I believe, is largely in accord with the.
This is, this is a policy we did not have on our policy. As we adopted, we suggest to adopt the existing policy from M A S C. We actually do have those cameras already installed. Have to have some backup to this. So we took it as is. And I just want to answer the lady that was here and spoke about privacy. There are always, I think personally, I speak for myself, there's always a balance between all kinds of rights. And I think that safety in school, those cameras are only for safety and security. They're not to catch people vaping. They're not to, they're just for safety and security. And between the two values of privacy and safety and security, I think that most of the community would prefer safety and security of their kids, even if some kind of, now, they, they. So I think this is, and the tape is not used for anything else, it goes only to police, it's only after if there was an incident. So there's no question of hacking, there's no question of actually having it on a line. So I think that we are very safe on this one. And I suggest that we will adopt it.
Thank you for clarifying that after the question came up. That's helpful.
Student involvement.
Thank you for thinking.
The next one is student involvement in decision making, J I B.
We just changed references.
So as we're moving forward with this policy review. So, as we're moving forward with this policy review, if it is word-for-word MAS C source, we're so noting, and we're seeing that approval dates get published as well, which wasn't entirely consistent in the past. Next one, student discipline. And the reference here was that it's already highly regulated, as you can well imagine. And there was a change made to ensure that were expulsion to be occurring, any, quote, any student alleged to have committed one or more of the, these acts should be afforded the same due process rights as for a long-term suspension. So, we're simply taking suspension rights and saying they would apply to expulsion as well.
Yeah, and it's not our, it's just following the Massachusetts law. There's nothing, we don't have discretion, there's no change that requires discretion.
Student dress code to follow MAS C, gang activity, secret societies. I'm using the titling, not the letter coding here. And we reviewed draft language here, and this is one where we are not following MAS C, but rather trying to help people understand what this is and what this is not with the language. For example, quote, "For purposes of this policy, gang is defined as any group, secret society, organization, association that advocates," and this was our debate, "that advocates tobacco, vaping, alcohol, drug use, violence, or intimidation on the basis of ethnicity, gender identity, religious and/or political beliefs, or disruptive and illegal behavior." Then got changed a little bit, so you'll see the second italics ending in, "on the basis of ethnicity, gender identity, religious or political beliefs." Next one is bullying prevention.
This one we made, the biggest change we made is the definition of cyberbullying. The old definition was taken out of reality of the 19th century, and we actually updated it to what is being used today, cyberbullying. I mean, there were all kind of definitions there that you can just laugh when you read them, like electromagnetic tapes, all kind of things. You know, I'm not old enough to understand what they are.
And finally, the policy J I E, pregnant students, and this was an adoption of MAS C. Their policy of 2009, which remains unchanged. Like note again, these undergo routine legal review by their team at MAS C. So, first read means these will come before us next time around after discussion.
Thank you for going through all of them. Any questions or comments from others on them, on those policies? Great, we'll bring them back next time, thank you. Then facility use fees.
Mr. Ichar.
Yes.
Walk us through this, please.
Sure, so I was asked to take a look at the current fees, they haven't been updated since 2009. So, I took a look at seven surrounding towns, and there's no consistent facility rental fees, they're all different. So, we tried to make sense of everybody's, so the districts that we compared, for the audience that can't see, Maynard, Lexington, Dover Sherborne, Whalen, Wellesley, Acton, Boxborough, Lincoln, Sudbury is the last one. And then we made some recommendations, not set in stone, just, we don't get much right now rental, rental money. We get about fourteen thousand at CPS, we will be getting a little bit more this year because we now get that money, but those figures aren't in yet, and we get about twenty thousand, give or take, at the high school. So, it's not something that we really bank on, and we don't get much of it, so.
You don't get much of it because we don't charge much, or because not many people really use it?
I...
Or both, I guess.
It's a combination, at the high school, our usage is so heavy, that we tend to have limited availability. At the other schools, the desire is less because they're not full-size gyms and some things like that. So, we tend to end up in the fifteen to twenty thousand.
So, what is an example of somebody who uses?
Sometimes the universities will, we have a longstanding relationship with us, the university, they hold weekend course, courses here. Summer camps of a few kinds, we use the facility here. And then more community use beyond that, certainly youth baseball, soccer, all.
And it's designed to, the theory is to cover the incremental cost of custodial support?
Custodial utilities.
So, custodians pay flat hourly from the user, so that's covered immediately, this is additional to that.
So, I mean, is there, am I, to me, there's a distinction between a community group that lives here or in Carlisle, and doesn't happen to be part of the school system versus somebody else, a university, and even that.
So, we did not have a tier before, so that is gonna be one of my recommendations for finishing.
So, I mean, on the, on the, I guess you call it tier two, I presume, why charge it all, really? I mean, at the end of the day, it's kind of more of an annoyance than, to your own point, it's such a tiny piece of revenue compared with, you know, I mean, we are a town asset.
There is overhead costs when we do use it to maintain facilities, and so there is, there are costs we incur from the usage.
And we've gotta pay.
Oh, we gotta pay, right.
Our unions might get a little upset.
We move from the...
We're making for...
You gotta pay them.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you're moving money from the left pocket to the right pocket.
So, for the students, we have to pay.
Yep. So, I just, I didn't really have time to look at this today, and it doesn't include the fields. And what I'm proposing is that I think that that would be probably the biggest, it's a summer usage of the fields. And in my opinion, just being in the community for twenty years, having my kids go there.
Use baseball, you know.
Yeah, but some of them are, many of them are for profit operations.
Oh, okay, profit, profit is different.
Yeah, we have one regular camp that uses.
So, I'm gonna...
Is that the soccer camp?
So, I'm not committing. I'm gonna propose something with, and I can send it for our next join meeting, a real next join meeting, not the 10th. I'll just put something together mimicking, you know, one of these other communities, I have a lot of them as well, and we can work together, just to put together something a little more substantive that we can have a sort of more...
Yeah, I mean, I, my preference is, let's, let's just chat philosophically about what we're trying to do, right? Again, I, I think, even though some few minor pennies of Carlisle money might get, you know, diverted because the Concord players need a place to practice. So, I mean, it's a, it's a town, it's a group, town asset, so I would definitely advocate for distinguishing between...
As a result of C C F play work, we have a commitment that we can never charge youth groups anything.
Anything, okay.
So, really, at the field level, that's not about the building level.
But at the, or at the, you know, auditorium level, or?
No, I, I agree, I just talk about, in my opinion, it's usually the private tier.
Okay, private is, right.
Like a, maybe a member of the community, that kind of thing, like a completely outside group.
Right, so they should pay, shouldn't they just pay whatever the incremental cost is?
I believe right now it's fifty-two bucks an hour, and I, I think that's... But that's, I think that's where we need to have the discussion, because it can add up, and it could be revenue.
Well, right, but what I'm saying is, so, again, philosophically, not at the numbers level. If we've already agreed that youth groups shouldn't pay.
They cannot.
Now, then you're next at, you know, town groups that aren't youth groups, like some theater company or something. What's the philosophy on that?
If they're for profit, if they're charging people money.
What's for profit?
Let me, let me offer a couple of things. One, for decades, we didn't allow any, any use. And then in the late eighties, we opened it up for, uh, use other than Concord youth groups. And then in the late eighties, there was a decision by the school committee that if there was space available, because protecting the school day for kids was always paramount, there would be a second tier of fees for groups not deemed Concord Carlisle nonprofits, if we wanted to accommodate them, and if custodians were willing to step forward and take the overtime in accord with their, their contract, which, note for your sake here, I think is still a three-hour minimum, Jared. So, just so you know, real numbers that people are encountering. So, I don't know if we have two tiers right now, or one, same one right here. In terms of philosophy, I think it was severalfold. One, we're noting it's a community high school, in effect, so the extent to which we can make it available is something we should have the means to do, but two, protect the school day. But third, not have prices such that it was a big incentive to use this as some huge cost-saving, because we really didn't want to get into the, the business of hosting, because sooner or later it compromises the name issue, because there's always, always that issue. I'll give you a simple example, I can think of a hundred. We make a commitment to rent on a Sunday morning, and it snows Saturday night. How much money are we willing to lose to plow that place out for that modest rent tomorrow, Sunday morning? All of these complications happen, it's a big management burden.
So, what is like Concord rent for the adults, do they pay? Like pickup basketball, do they pay?
The gym is so heavily scheduled, it's almost impossible to get in.
Yeah, there's really very little usage of opportunity.
My concern is, when you said fifty-two dollars an hour, that was for the fields?
Yeah.
So, honestly, I have a problem with this. If, if, when Cynthia said for profit, if I understand right, there are summer camps, I know about the soccer, the summer camp that is, that are for profit, which means it has nothing to do with, somebody actually charges the kids and put the money in his pocket. That's for profit, just a second, just a second there. My problem is this, it's not the, of course, great, it serves the community and stuff, and it serves the individual, and as long as there's no conflict of interest, I don't have a problem. My problem is that even if there is, there are waivers, and even if all those things are in place, if a group of kids is using our facilities and something will happen, we will be sued despite of waivers, despite of everything, of contractual relationship, and if it's for fifty-two dollars an hour, it's just the nuisance value is too big for this. You know what I'm saying? So, normally, either we charge for it, and there is some added value, but if there's no added value, then like...
I, I don't think it's a simple, but it's not as black and white as, so let's, let me go back to the layers, right? Youth groups that are in-town, rectly, you know, whatever, they're not getting charged.
For the fields, they're not getting charged.
Okay, but what about the basketball team?
They are getting charged.
Why is that? Because custodial represents an incremental?
The agreement for the fields is part of the C C F play process to build the fields, so...
Okay, all right, fair enough. But let's use, so let's use either a field that's free or an auditorium that's presumably roughly at cost, right? Custodial, whatever. There's still nuisance value if somebody's gonna sue somebody. I presume insurance arrangements have been worked out, the carriers are fully aware of that.
They must provide us insurance documentation when they submit the rental.
That's a, that's a law for camp.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, fine, so, I'm not really sure I'm with you on the, you know, suing part. But there's a layer, and that's sort of a not-for, clearly not-for-profit town-oriented. Then there's, then there's, there's a not-for-profit, or depending on how one defines it, like, again, like the Concord players, I don't know, whatever they are, some theater group wants to use the auditorium. They're not making money, they may be charging for tickets, but they're not making money, and they're a community group. To me, that's the same, it's like you pay sixty-five dollars to your kid, you know, youth basketball, two hundred dollars, I guess. Or you pay fifteen dollars to see a play, it's the same thing, it's just covering costs. Then there's the, I agree, it's kind of a thorny one, it's like the soccer camp, where there's some, maybe some profit, but it's really a community-oriented thing. And then there's like X, Y, Z from outsiders that come in. On that last one, if we don't want to be in the business, we should just say no, we don't owe them anything. But on that middle one, on the other ones, I do feel like we are community resource. We're the biggest building, we're the biggest auditorium, we're the biggest field.
Yeah, but we're the cheapest seed.
Well, no, we're not the cheapest seed, I mean...
No, what I'm saying, the surrounding schools all charge a lot more than we do.
Well, I'm saying if we limit it to the organizations that are town-centric, it's irrelevant. They're not gonna go, outsiders aren't gonna come here, we're not gonna...
I'd like to have a more specific proposal, because I don't, I think we're talking in generalities and...
And you need generalities to frame this.
I'd like to simplify it in the following way, if we can. One, to share the idea that we do have, to your point, David, an obligation, I think, to Concord Carlisle youth-serving groups and designated nonprofits. They fit a certain criteria, they've met the test, they're in the public interest. But our responsibility is still to do whatever is necessary around cost recovery, because we shouldn't be subsidizing, we shouldn't be supporting private profit and public expense, can't do that, can't do that. If we want to, and we turn to the administration here, if we want to also allow groups that aren't deemed Concord Carlisle nonprofits to come in at some kind of surcharge, which is what we elected to do a few decades ago. Few in number, but it'd allow us to have an option other than a simple no.
Correct.
We could look at that with a second tier, but I think community obligation for community interest groups, yes. Cost recovery, I don't, I don't think that's negotiable. I think we can look at what it, what it means in terms of utilities, in terms of other costs, wear and tear, and the regulations. We've had occasions where a group within ten minutes did thousands of dollars worth of damage, because people didn't change their shoes when they heard no more, you know, so... Nightmare scenarios are numerous with this stuff, because visitors don't have the same...
So, I'm with you, I mean, I'm really more to the, just say no to the visitors. The intersection that's difficult to me
I totally agree.
is, is the Target soccer camp, for example, and Liverpool F C. And Heather and I are big consumers of soccer, so it's near and dear to our heart.
So, I have a lot of other examples, we have a big lacrosse tournament here, and I absolutely...
Well, right, so the question is, what level of Concord content becomes relevant?
Right.
Right? I mean, in race situation, it's pretty Concord Carlisle-centric, just for participation. But in Liverpool's situation, it's kind of half and half, I don't know, I mean, you know, how do you make the call? And they're both for some kind of profit, by the way.
I, I totally agree, I personally think that the, everything that is community-related, nonprofits or the community stuff, should be cost-recover, should be cost-recover, you know?
We agree, so let's say, okay, I agree.
The same reason, actually, Garrett, when we came up with the idea about subsidies to, to, for the trips, you said we cannot take it from the budget, because we cannot take the budget to actually help a specific group, it has to be there. So, it's the same idea, you cannot actually, I don't think that would be ethical. I would say that anything that is not this, any outside user of private, whatever private, if there is no, the nuisance value, the potential nuisance value of those things, because they made a big damage because of this, unless there is a clear financial reason to do it, I would not touch it with a temple.
I was just, I, I was just, I just wanna say that we should also look at the convenience value and the fact that if you don't allow for those programs to happen here on, in Concord, these people will be...
I'm just saying, we're not gonna let them.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, no, but you, to your point, you were saying, let's not allow...
No, 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 I said we should charge for it, not to be able to allow, there should be a financial tier that will make it unreasonable.
Well, reasonable, yeah, that's...
Can I jump in here? I think David was looking for conceptual agreement, I think we have that. What I'm hearing is that we all feel like community organizations should be able to use the facility, I agree with that. And that non, for-profit organizations should have to pay a fee. And Cynthia is offering to bring us... And Cynthia is offering to bring us back a recommend, a draft, some options of what that looks like. Does that feel comfortable to everybody? And then next time, we'll look at Cynthia's draft.
Sounds good.
That sounds good.
Perfect, thank you for offering to do that.
The next, a month away, so.
Exactly, a month away, not on the 10th, not on.
I mean, in the meantime, you're charging what you charge.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we're, we do have.
This is how, we're talking FY21.
Right, because we've already made agreements with summer camps, that we certainly would be highly unethical.
I have a question, you.
We're not going to change things.
You have a whole town meeting in the high school auditorium?
Yeah, in the gym.
In the gym, do we charge those guys?
We do not.
Oh, good, that's a great answer.
Which ones, sorry?
You're not charging the town, the whole town.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's probably a good idea.
They incur quite a few classes, you know, but.
Yes, I'm sure.
No, and I agree with that, I'm just saying.
Maybe if you shared it, if they won the votes, it would fly away.
Anyway, next agenda item is international trips, speaking of something that'll be quick and easy.
Right.
I got you.
So, let's move on to that. I'm just gonna quickly tee us up by reminding us all that we've had a lot of disjointed conversations here. And we, to Yuval's point, promised ourselves that we would come back and have a focused conversation and look at how are we addressing trips and what is our process going to be. Court has done an incredible amount of work for the document that he sent us to do a really comprehensive overview of what we're doing, the various factors that we have to look at. And based on that, making some recommendations. I know both Court and Yuval who spent significant time on this, spent some time with Lori and Mike Mistrullo, done a lot of research, so I want to start with a huge thanks for that.
Yes.
And also for the creation of this document, and I'm gonna pass it over to Court and ask if you can give us kind of a high-level overview of what you've put together.
Sure.
And then the next step can be, we can look at your recommendations and debate. Though, before I do that, let me also frame it, I think our, our process here is tonight, we'll hear the overview, discuss the recommendations that Court has brought to us. And hopefully, with the plan being, at the end of a discussion tonight, we can agree what our recommendations are moving forward. Somebody, maybe you'll be willing to continue this for us, Court, can take that and summarize it into a draft plan that we can then look at again next time to finalize and confirm. Then we finalize our plan, and we're done in this meeting and the next one, with a plan for trips process. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
That's my plan.
So, my, first of all, full disclosure, my thoughts have benefited from these trips. And remember them fondly, as our reps tonight referenced. Secondly, I think we need to remember what they said, and that is that we want these trips to be real contributors to the life at the high school and not be any indirect source of any kind of stress or misunderstanding. So the sooner we do whatever we want to do, the better. Third, I'd say, we're not gonna, we're not fixing something that's broken, in my estimation. What we're doing is looking at ways that we can improve. Trips vis-à-vis our inclusion equity goals, and to be confident, highly confident that we have management pieces intact, so that risk is managed, because there's inherent risk in this. What you see here is my structure around simply telling you the story of what is so with the trips, which I hope will, one, surface or reveal any differences of opinion we have, Lori and Jared and Mike Mistrullo, of course, included, because we all want to be on the same page. Second, I think this will hold new members on the school committee, be helpful to them, I should say, to give them a somewhat comprehensive backdrop. Third, I would say we looked at a couple of other school districts that take this work very, very seriously. And we are, I think, largely and very nicely in line with them. We didn't see gaps or discrepancies or oversights on our part that alarmed us. But front and center is the, the issue we've spoken of earlier tonight, and that is, are we putting forth trips that in fact achieve our goals around community building and inclusion and social equity and access? We know that income stratification means access stratification often in the world, and the more we can reduce that and minimize that here, the better. So I start out with what I consider to be the best description of why we do this, and that comes right out of the high school website. And some of this is over the name of our principal, his wording, we won't be comfortable with it. And then I looked at core values for alignment there, which I think you'll find are comfortable in terms of the alignment. You've got trip-specific policies, if we wanted to, we could find you another dozen policies. There are probably three dozen policies that relate to students and behavior and decorum and rules and so on. But these are what I consider to be trips specific. Background, page two, on why we're paying attention to this. And at the bottom of that, page one, the way I characterize this is that we want to be confident that a CCHS trip is easily distinguished from a commercial trip for students. That there is not only a true and rich value add when a high school teacher needs this trip, but that that is known to us in the, in the application process. Which doesn't mean that we intend to make our screening difficult or rigorous. I think that largely happens at Mr. Mistrullo's level and Dr. Hunter's level. I have used these terms opt-in and opt-out, because I, I want to encourage us to recognize the difference between an intact school group, let's call it a team, a chorus, what have you, who's going on a trip together, where the social pressure for participation might be much greater. I think it'd be reasonable to sort, might be much greater, and we have to ask, are we doing whatever necessary to accommodate inclusion, so that somebody doesn't have to visibly opt out of a group for financial reasons? Very different than the trips open to all, where membership in some, some group prior isn't a criteria. We, page three, basic practice, met with both Mr. Mistrullo, Dr. Hunter, and also with Eric Paul, who represented the teachers and the trips, because he's got pretty deep experience in this. And were, I think, largely encouraged by the work that they've put in together to see that their management practices and their roles get lined up. What the teacher does and doesn't do, what the principal does and doesn't do, what the superintendent does and doesn't do, and how they come together, and how we've got enough, enough overlap, intentional overlap for really good, good management and protection. And I hope that this was of use to you, Dr. Hunter, and requiring us all to spend a little more time on this, so that we can be that much more confident that should something challenging happen in the future, we are ready for it. Vendor relationships, I reference, and note that, I'm not quite sure if our website directs somebody to a teacher for more information about enrollment, or directs somebody promptly to a website of an outside vendor, what the legal implications of that are. But I would venture, I guess, not trained in the law, to say that we can never escape our liability because we receive money for it. As soon as there's an exchange, there's a contractual obligation that is very real. I mentioned financial aid and the fact that the Sharon Young Scholarship Fund is now more organized and robust than we thought it was when we last met, good news. We can look more at that. We have had our legal firm, Murphy and Aaron Murphy, weigh in, and I think it was very helpful information. I'm not sure that it was new information. I don't know how you all feel about that. And I conclude with page five, several of my questions, and I take responsibility for these, these are mine and mine alone, notwithstanding the fact that Lori and Mike and Jared and Yuval helped me a great deal on much of the work here. I frame these questions, and I frame the recommendations, the questions being, do any vendors receive direct payments? I'd like to know. Do we have any requisite teacher training or assurances of their readiness for handling unexpected events when they happen a long way from home? I'm curious about lines of communication when a teacher and a group of students are overseas, because we want to make sure those are wide open and useful at all times. And after we approve a trip, what is done to monitor the wisdom of that trip the way we originally anticipated it was going to happen up until students depart? I think the answer is probably pretty simple, it's Mr. Mistrullo and Dr. Hunter. And then recommendations, and again, these are for consideration, I wouldn't put it more strongly than that. One, I think if the Sharon Young Fund is going to be a source common to all, so that students don't have to individually seek out teachers and say, what is so about money? Which I think can be a difficult conversation for kids in some cases. We might play a very important supportive role there, let's find out what it might be. The second one is a, an idea from other districts, Newton included, where there's simply a built-in fee, or an add-on fee, I think theirs is fifty dollars, that simply makes clear that making these trips more available to more people is everybody's business. And anybody who signs up for a trip understands that they're going to do their bit to open the doors to students who might otherwise have more difficulty. And we're even imagining, and we've heard stories of families who said, well, if it was one child who was going, fine, but what if it's two this year and two went last year? Because they're all in high school at the same time. So it's hard to predict who needs help and when. I'd like to know from Mr. Stanton about the insurance, because we've already discussed here, what would it look like to change and increase that insurance, for example, around cancellation losses?
Just to point out, sorry, you skipped one.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, forgive me, yes, yeah, thank you. This one, I forget where this one came from, Lori, but.
It came from Eric Paul.
From Eric Paul, okay, thank you, thank you very much. And I'll simply read it, allow teachers who are repeating certain trips, repeating, that's the operative word, repeating certain trips, multiple years now, to request initial and final approval on the same date. Meaning we could evoke, in keeping with our policy for an initial, okay, okay, and then.
I know, I was just there for something.
And we can vote five minutes later on final approval, because the, the gap between initial and final for new teachers, new to the trip business, is go continue your planning with our initial lesson. But somebody who's proven themselves, who Lori has confidence in, who's told by Lori, yeah, move ahead with both, is, I think, something we might want to hear. We can still keep our policy same, initial and final, and simply have two votes on a given night for the same trip, if we wanted to do it that way. Work with superintendent to identify and showcase exemplars of educational planning and delivery for fee-based trips to advise prospective new trip leaders. This is all about, how do we hold the bar high with making sure that our trips are unique, and they're unique because they're CCHS trips? And that we don't default to other people's models necessarily. Next one, I'd suggest a review of our online forums, available now to the parents. I don't see any specific issue with them, other than that they look ancient, so. I'm sure they were put up there long before your time, so I might just bear a review. And then, because you've done so much work this year with Mike to get really close to these guidelines and protocols, do we want to get some of this, perhaps it already is, get it more fully documented? I know you've met with all the teachers who lead trips, I know you have your template for which you want to review and go over, and what exchanges you want to have, I'm not sure what we want to capture forward, going forward. And then finally, and I, this is not a big one for me, I don't think, because I don't think much is going to come up, but if there are districts that chose to not do overnight trips or fee-based trips, I'd simply like to put the question out to everybody in this room, was there a specific reason why that it would inform us or give us some caution? Because I haven't found one, I'm not suggesting there's something there, but I simply think it's obligatory that we ask that question. So if there is something that would give pause to this, that somehow is missing our scrutiny, it'd be helpful if someone would speak up about it. So that's what we came up with. And that's my authorship, I'll own any deficiencies here.
I think the disclosure is that Court and I, and I, I will not go into it, I like it, but just one thing, because I, Court and I worked together on this, and while Court and I, excuse me, many times agree on the specifics totally, in the presentations, we totally do not agree. And this document is Court's, it's not mine, and I.
I like it, it's great.
Here, we can share again.
Yeah, I like it, it's a lot of hard work and very crisply presented.
Yeah.
So are we doing discussion?
I'll, I'll work on this, but you, you have something you want to say?
Well, I, I think two buckets of, I think this addresses sort of the, the two buckets that I have in this whole issue. The first one, which is the more mechanical one, is, you know, with several hundred kids, maybe traveling every year in faraway places, we just have to have a better process. And you've taken that on, and the mechanics of making sure the forms are right, and the process is right, and there's clear qualifications, I mean, I, it's not fully formed here, but I think a lot of these items address that mechanical piece, that we should be, we're in the trip business, if we're in the trip business, let's run it like a business, not to make money, but to be crisp about the way we enter, evaluate, and communicate, and all that. So, you know, I trust the competency of the, personally, the administration to take the recommendations. If we agree on it, we can say, okay, make this into a codified process and insurable minds. And then that will address those things, insurance being part of that. The, the bigger and tougher issue is the equity issue. If I understand where you're going with your recommendations, you're saying, I think, okay, take, take the piecemeal, idiosyncratic, maybe, approach out of the hands of the teachers, don't make them do car washes, because who knows what, and it's a lot of work, and it's not predictable. Let's, again, sort of codify, institutionalize the scholarship fund. Let's add a surcharge to make sure that there's money in the kitty. So part of the cost of having the trip is contributing to that, even if that particular trip doesn't necessarily reap its surcharge. Some do more, some do less, I like that. I mean, that, if that's where you're going, I think that's a good approach. Because I think, to me, the only practical way to take out inequity, the financial inequity, regardless of whether there's social pressure or not. is to make it a school-wide process, not a trip-specific process. So those, I guess I agree with, where I think it goes.
There's one piece that didn't make it in here, which I should mention. I'm not sure who to credit for it, but it's well-known to the high school and the superintendent that if there is a trip that is more ambitious and therefore more expensive, say during Q5, there better be a variety of other trips available too at the very same time.
If there are, anyway.
And there are, anyway. Exactly. I'm simply saying they're very sensitive to that.
Well, you may mention, right? You said there's less pressure, Q5, because there's more choices. But nevertheless, our student rep student, they kind of dodged the question. They all said how great the trips were. They didn't really come up with, you know, is there any, maybe they can't. Is there any animosity? You might be, do struggle with it, but resentment.
Stigma.
Nah, stigma, not really. Maybe resentment by kids who can't go, of the kids who do go. Although, I get it that the kids who go all say it's a great experience. I worry about the kids who can't go.
Well, if you tell me it's a great experience, I wish I'd gone.
Right. And if you can't go for financial reasons, or, you know, well, let's say just financial reasons. Because if parents object to it for other reasons, okay, that's your parents. I mean, you can't, we're not going to go fix those relationships. But anyway, that does worry me, and that's why I encourage the approach of having a more robust and less trip-specific scholarship avenue.
And is the, I have a question. Is the surcharge that you were mentioning, that $50, is that going to be applying at this? Is there going to be a scale if the trip is $5,000 or the trip is like $1,000? Because there are students that work the $10 jobs to pay for the trip themselves. So, you know, and again, going back to the equity, if you plan, you have four years to take part in the trip, and there are many lessons to walk away from high school. And one of them is being financially responsible and planning, and there are students, and I've heard of a student that planned for three or four years. So the fairness, in that sense, we should also consider, you know, how can we meet that equity question, but be fair to the students that are planning? I did not hear anything about when is the time that we advertise and we tell about the trips to the families? Because if you give, beginning of, if you plan a trip a year in advance, so for example, you have a freshman coming in and you hear about a trip first day on that, in that auditorium on the first day, that the kids are going to be participating. These are the options. You advertise, you allow a lot more time for families to plan, for children to raise the money or work, save up money. So that's another way to bring, bridge that gap of payments. And one more I could think in terms, is there any place on the forms that will be submitted to the parents that would specifically ask, how much money is the particular student needing to be able to go on a trip?
That is part of the very private conversation and communication that happens right now. I can't answer all of your questions. I think they're necessary questions. I think that the committee that the principal has put together to help manage the scholarship fund should help us debate some of these questions, certainly. I think you're right. A contribution toward the greater good of all for a $150 trip shouldn't be the same as for a $4,000 trip. Exactly where to go with that, I don't know. I'm not of a mind that we will solve these problems. I think what we'll do is mitigate and reduce some of the potential for inequity. And we're never going to know exactly why decisions get made in individual families, nor should we. It's not our business. But from where we sit, maybe we can make it a little easier for everybody.
I have a couple of thoughts and reactions on this, too. First of all, I think a lot of these are really helpful, and I appreciate them. What I've been doing, as I'm sitting here, listening and looking at these, is kind of sorting some of your recommendations into what I'm seeing as categories to help us organize them. Some of them are about, are financial, right? And I see the financial ones, so far, support the Sharon Young Fund, which I think we should be doing, create the surcharge. And I kind of added one onto the top of that, which in a way is an umbrella, which is define the process for collecting information and distributing. Mr. Mistruolo does have a committee in place that's starting to do that. And this leads to one of my questions, which is, as we discuss this, I'd also like to bump over the questions that we're asking to you, Laurie, is to ask for your feedback and your take on these in terms of what you and Mike would think are, you know, realistic and good ideas, but also where we should be looking to you to say, okay, you know, if we're asking for a process for students to apply for financial aid and money to be distributed, is that something we should be looking to you and asking Mr. Mistruolo and his committee to figure out? Or is that something that you want us to actually define? So I'm going, a couple of different directions here. What is categories, but first?
I think it's probably the most helpful if we were to propose something to you, whether that's through the committee or just in general, before it went to the committee.
Yep.
I think there's a lot of, the overall arching pieces here, I think are the right pieces. So it feels like we have to go into each one. I mean, in terms of the planning, we've already had some really informal brainstorming sessions that, could we create a four-year master plan of these trips so that as you enter your freshman year, you can see the four years out and pick the trip? Or multiple, whatever, whatever works for you and know what your target is, so it isn't the fall of that year that you're trying to find that kind of cash? Maybe it's years before that you and the family gets planned. And we think that also benefits teachers, because some of the things we've talked on with two trips being canceled for enrollment, are we stepping on each other a bit in terms of the offerings and the opportunities for kids? And we need to spread things out so that the opportunities are not all happening on top of each other.
Can I ask, before you continue? Do the trips in the oversubscribed ones, is there a stack preference? Like, are you in a certain class or in a certain public classroom?
Yeah, we're not, we're not at a point where we're having any wait lists or confuses.
Pretty much, anyway.
No. Yeah, yeah. So we're bouncing around ideas, too, that I think complement what's here, plus can take what's here and really flesh it out and put those procedural pieces in.
And to your point, Laurie, I got the impression that Mr. Mistruolo is already trying to convey the idea that you can look out over four years.
Yeah, I think we'd like to...
It's not quite junior year abroad like the colleges might have baked in by now. He wants students to have confidence that something like this will be available later on for you, too.
Okay, good. That's very helpful. Because it's also important for us to keep in mind, as we're talking here, we're not the only ones defining all of this. The administration is doing a lot of work on it, also.
And some of that's coming from the amount of time we've spent with the teachers leading the trips this year, that they have ideas, too, in refining and improve how we're operating, which is great.
So I guess that kind of comes back to, let's look, can we look at categories here and see if we're, or maybe just go through it point by point, and see if we're all on the same page?
Maybe I can answer.
Okay, go for it.
Think quietly.
Yes, you are.
I think that it's extremely important for me to try and explain the way I look at it. I think that international travel, travel, generally, and international travel is an extremely important education value. And I think that equity and inclusion is an extremely important value. And I think that with all due respect, between these values, we have to find a balance. If we do not solve the problem of equitable access and inclusion in real cultural competency, we should not do the trips. It's very simple. I believe that this is, for me, it's a more important, especially in a very affluent community, it does bear, those that are not there, is as important, or for me, more important than the value of the international trips, not trips. So we have to find many, many ways. And there are few. The Court kind of jumped. We have to find many ways to actually see that the value of equitable access, accessibility, and inclusion, really inclusion stuff, is maybe above, somebody has to move their finger, the value of international travel. That's the first thing. The other thing that was mentioned here and kind of we totally skipped, I must admit, that it's the law, it's the, it's the market, it's everything, is the education value of the trips. The two girls that sat here actually said that they had extremely interesting experiences because it complemented things, because it was things that they cannot do as their families, because, you know. So I think that we totally skipped this question that I started in the beginning about the educational value of the trips. At the end of the day, Court actually wrote...
Or addressed it, to some extent.
Sorry?
It's there, sorry. It's there, because it talks about the value.
So Court actually said, there's been discussion about how this responsible trip may be clearly distinguished from packaged trips or commercial vendor. There are many trips that families can actually send their kids, use to, the same vendors that are offering trips through the school, offering sun camps, offering things. The question is whether we should not, as a school, offer something more. And I think that we had a clear agreement with Ms. Court and with Eric Poehl and stuff. I must admit that I did not see lots of support from the administration in the meeting about this, but it has to be something with an added value. For it to be a school-sponsored trip, it's not enough that kids from the school are going as a teacher. And then we have a mixed bag. Some of the trips we have now really offer something different, and some are, to state clearly, lame. Now, there are many ways, I think, to find this equilibrium and to actually do something bigger, just as a great district, to offer something that is more than the plain vanilla activities. And I just jumped to all kind of, the Sharon Young, that everybody here said, or Court said, is a big thing. At the end of the day, the Sharon Young today, if I understand right, is still not an independent nonprofit. It doesn't even have its own website. It doesn't have any, you know, in order to donate to the Sharon Young, you have to find it through the Alcott School. You know, at the end of the day, if you take it seriously, somebody has to take it seriously.
Yeah, but he's proposing a different structure. He's just calling it Sharon.
He said it.
But, you know, it's really a different thing.
Yeah, but we have to actually take it and do it. We have to arrange fundraisings that are fundraising for this, like we've seen in other places, like we brought information to the administration how to do it. And there are, there are at least one district that we met with that are doing serious fundraising and raising tens of thousands of dollars a year in order to send their kids to very interesting, special, the more value we will offer in the trips, the easier it will be to go to the community and ask for donations. So the other thing is that, one of the students here described an amazing outdoor trip to the Swiss Alps. I'm sure that it was an amazing trip. But I don't say, don't offer this. But please offer more trips that are much cheaper. I mean, the White Mountain, I know that is such a trip. This is one, actually, the one that is always oversubscribed. It's very limited, it's only seniors that actually get it. But you know, you can enjoy outdoors, not only in the Swiss Alps. I mean, I've tried it, believe me. You know, you can actually give people not only the love of outdoors, but the love of their own country before you send them to the Swiss Alps. It's a matter of educational message as well, with all due respect. This, I'm not even going to go into the price of the Swiss Alps trip. The, so we should actually encourage teachers to offer things that are different. Now, we found out during this meeting is that there is a discrepancy inherent, that you inherit, it's not this, between, some teachers are actually getting, how do you call this?
A stipend.
Stipend, sorry. Stipends for preparing trips, and others don't.
I mean, I thought I meant that...
Exchange...
Precisely, exchange... Yeah. But of course, so Principal Mistruolo said, and I think he's right, that the stipend will not actually make teachers do it, but the feeling of inequality they get and I don't, despite the fact I prepare an amazing trip to the jungles and this and that, and worked weeks and weeks in order to prepare and don't get, you know. So this is something that has to be solved. And actually Eric Poehl, he read and read letters about this. So at the end of the day, we have to create a mechanism that we encourage teachers to come with unique things. And they can, we have amazing teachers. They can come with real trips. In order to reduce cost of other trips, I think that this committee has to take a decision that you use vendors only in exceptional situations. The other district that we found, that we met, that are doing things really exemplary, never use vendors unless it's a vendor in a very difficult country that you have to arrange. But it's not a vendor, I don't say, but not using for air travel, not using a travel agency. You have to, and actually you have to create a situation that a travel agency actually give grants, and all this is... But to create, and to take just an over the counter, over the shelf trip from a vendor, so why do we have to do it as a school? Why should it be a school-sponsored trip? So using a vendor should be, and it increases the cost a lot. I mean, we've checked, we compared, Court and I met with Newton, and we compared the cost of trips and hours. We're twice more expensive for half the time. You know, and they actually, at the end, actually give like $400 to $500 back of each trip. And they just take a contingency. So this is another thing. So we have to, I think, if we really want to take it seriously, and procedure, there are all kinds of things about procedure. But procedures, yeah, I totally trust the administration to come up with the right insurance, bring it to us, right forms. That's not my main issue. My main issue is that we have to create a value that is wow and a price that would be comfortable for everybody with a possibility to actually give support in an organized way, centralized way, to those who need it. Q5 is another question. We discussed this in the meeting. Some of those trips are going in Q5. And this is actually something that was brought to my attention by parents. I did not think about it originally. But Q5, the whole idea is to create a situation in which all the students are doing something together. And with those trips, very few people are going to the trip. So with those trips in Q5, we create a situation that there is, you know, there is Q5 of those that are doing cake glazing and those that are hiking in the Swiss Alps.
But that's actually not correct. Q5 is supposed to allow students to develop their interests, and you're supposed to spark interest in things that students...
To those that can afford it.
No, no, no. Because they're taking bread-making classes, there's a lot of different opportunities for students to explore interest and take something on that they have never tried before. So it's not about putting students together and building team, you know, teamwork-ing opportunities or togetherness. It's about individual, individual needs of a student.
That's totally correct, but there's still a class that goes to the Swiss Alps, but others stay in here because they can afford it.
That's, that's the equity. I mean, I think that was correct.
Yeah.
It's not a togetherness thing.
I'm just bringing it up. I don't, I said in the meeting as well, I don't have mine clear, but there is something that, a concern that was brought up, and I'm not assured the place for the international trip should be the Q5. That's a concern that was brought up, and I'm not sure it's not legitimate. Because at the end of the day, within the year, you create a situation that... Because at the end of the day, within the year, you create a situation that those that can afford it.
Anytime in the year you would create that, right? I mean, I have a deeper issue on that, which is.
I just brought it up.
The teachers are being paid for by the district, but they're selectively going places.
I admit, I don't have it clear. I admit, I don't have it clear. It's a concern that was brought up. I'm not too sure it's not legitimate, but it's something to think.
But can I just say, I'm so sorry, just last, last thing. In terms of equity, I don't, I think we sort of glossed over the whole idea that there are families that really cannot afford sending, going as a whole family to international destination. Because there's five of them, or there's four of them. However, if their opportunity presents, myself as a parent, I would be very comfortable sending my child with a class for an incredible experience and I don't have to spend twenty thousand dollars to travel with a whole family. So in some ways, we are solving the equity problem for many families. We, we should not be trying to be everything to everybody. We're not this, this is a small portion of educational experience that is supposed to support what the children are learning in school. As we heard the students talk about taking a class in geology or environmental science and going to Austria and sparking, you know, and being really excited about what they have learned in class. That's the, that's what the value that is for each, each student, each family. So unfortunately, I know it's a difficult question, but it's not that we as a school, we are able to solve those problems for everybody. And we can't, we can't put ourselves in everybody's shoes. But creating opportunities where families can plan for it, kids know about this, the kids get excited. On your, to your point, that the kids actually get excited about the upcoming trips. That might be the bridge to, you know, to markets going.
So I think we have many, you know, I think we have always interesting useful discussions. But we brought up so many issues, we could be here for another three hours and we still aren't going to be able to hit someplace. Because I think everybody has some valid points and concerns. But then how are we going to finish up this topic tonight?
So that's what I was just trying to get to. I wanted to kind of summarize what I've heard from everybody in terms of concepts. We're not all necessarily saying the same thing in terms of what we want. But I would say there are four buckets that I would put all of this into. One is equity, financial equity, equity inclusion. Two is ongoing process and procedures in terms of our process, right? Trip creation and approvals. Three, I would say is educational value. It's a concept that's come up, the value of each trip. And four, I would just call, at the risk of going back to our endless goals list, housekeeping. A few of these things that are kind of one-time recommendations that you made. For instance, get a review of some of the insurance things. That's kind of a one-time housekeeping. There are a couple others like that.
And maybe one thing that isn't really captured in the list is schedule. And I'll say, schedule like vacations, not during the school year or German.
I think that falls into ongoing process and procedures in terms of schedule.
I just wanted to try to catch that.
So yes, capturing that, yes, scheduling is one of the things.
Q5 is different than April vacation, I think is your point.
And the concept that Laurie was talking about that.
Whether I agree or disagree, I just wanted to try to catch that.
Correct, to capture that. The idea that they've been talking about kind of a four-year lens of this and making it all, that all to me falls, falls under process and procedures. So those are, those are broad buckets, but I think kind of covers everything that's been brought up here. So then the next question to your point is, what do we do about it next, right? I would like to look at each of those four and see if we can come up with a, at least kind of directional recommendations, somewhat, you know, using Court's suggestions as the springboards to go forward with and then have one of us summarize those. And some of it is looking back to Lori and saying, okay, on some of these areas, we'd love for you to go back and work with Mike and the team, the committee, the administration, and come to us with, here's what we would suggest in that area. Because we don't want to be creating it all from scratch if there's a team that's already thought about this a lot and has suggestions. For instance, on the financial side, I completely agree that we should have more of a structure in terms of how kids apply for financial help. And I think, I'm guessing, and I think I've heard the teachers who lead these trips would agree with that. They would like to not be involved with that, right? So on that one, I feel like the recommendation should be, let's ask for a draft financial aid process that includes support of the Sharon Young Fund, that includes maybe a surcharge on trips, that then adds to that fund.
There are some money, so we're not surcharging three dollar trips.
Right, and a process, either a committee or a process for kids to apply for that and for the money to be distributed. That to me is something that I think I would look to administration to say, can you bring us a draft of that process? Does that make sense?
It makes sense with Lori, because there is a funding source. We talked about it in the meetings, Principal Masurro and the administration. The Sharon Young doesn't have, it has money, but it's not enough to actually, we have a funding source. It has to be, if we take it seriously, we have to do it seriously. Somebody has to actually sign in from the community, from the administration. I don't know how to do it. But to take this Sharon Young idea and to actually upgrade it to a real thing with fundraising activity. Because now, Principal Masurro made it very clear, there's money to give maybe once a year and there's no way to actually, you know, it depends on individuals.
But if you surcharge like as a percentage.
A surcharge will be what?
Five percent of the trip. That's one in twenty.
So I guess what I'm saying right now is, I don't think it's up to us to decide how, what the fundraising looks like. I would suggest that we ask administration to come back to us with suggestions.
Well, I want to push back on that though. I think, I think it is up to us, if equity is like a big central thing. I wouldn't weigh in on, you know, what the form looks like. That's an administrative thing. This is a big thing and I don't fully go with every point you've made, but in the big, big picture, I do align with you. Well, in the big picture, I align with you. And I think if, Sharon Young's just a name. And I don't think we can rely, just like we shouldn't rely on car washes for raising money. I don't think we should rely on the efforts of some people to try to raise money in the community. I think if we're going to do it systemically, it's got to be systemic. Now, I proposed earlier that we actually have a budget item and, you know, a few meetings ago. And Wally, you know, stepped on that, he didn't like that.
I know, it's not that he didn't like it. It's not that he didn't like it.
Okay, so fine. But if we could deal with surcharge, if, again, it should be proportional to the cost. But if it's a five percent surcharge, let's just say as a number, that's one in twenty. And I think trips are like twenty people, right? So that's like one scholarship per trip full, but it may not be full, it may be pieces. You just have to come up with something that says, this is the cost. The cost is, and this is a lesson, I think, to Adam's point, that children can learn by. That, you know, it's the notion of charity. You're not tithing quite, but you're giving some of what you, whether you earned it or you got it from your parents, you're contributing to that. And then the thing goes away, it's just a matter of managing the money. And I think, again, I think the administration can work the mechanics, but from a conceptual standpoint, it completely depersonalizes it, de-trips it, de-everythings it and says, this is just the way we're going to do that, so that there's always some money to be spread around.
I actually want to just add to what David just said and go back to my first part. I think that as a committee, our responsibility is to actually say, and honestly, I believe that if we say things, we move very quickly. As long as we don't have this duck in a row, we don't do trips. You know, the question is to decide, in comparing those values, I actually thought that this value of the equitable access and possibility is at least as important as the international trips. So we have to take it seriously, actually, because there was, talk about it for years now. I quoted in the first discussion, I quoted the protocol from three years ago. You know, everybody, I don't believe that one person in the administration don't think there should be a mechanism. Okay, but we have to do something about it.
That's what we're talking about right now, students.
I think we are, I think this thing does have some traction now. I don't think it's going to go away. I want to be careful, I'll direct this at you, Yuval. I want to be careful that we don't send mixed messages that confuse teachers or kids about our commitment to trips.
I agree.
If we ban trips, we ban trips, but I'm not sending that message now. We're protecting trips and making them better right now. And I think we are committed. A practical question that I hope you could answer in the future for us is, what would it look like if our current shared mechanism for managing the equity inclusion access piece of this, not the educational quality piece, that's ours to consider when we look at individual trips, but the inclusion piece is one that I think requires us to look at the mechanics that could be afforded us with the now Sharon Young Scholarship Fund. Because that is ostensibly the way we could do it. It has to have a name, it has to have a structure, it has to have a process. It already has a committee behind it, it already has some funds pulled together. So question for a future date, Lori, is, is that mechanism ready to step up to something that looks, looks a little different and more robust? To accomplish more of our goals.
Sure, I think, you know, I think we need to appreciate that that vehicle was the response to the request of the committee to get something started. We're less than a year in and two kids have benefited and it's twenty-five thousand dollars to work with. It's the start that I felt I was asked for.
Excellent.
Is there room for growth and structure and sustainable plans? Of course.
Well, the reason I ask is that I want to just presume that these good-natured folks are going to suddenly have their role redefined. We want to work with them, they want to work with us.
Yeah, we would need to work with them and talk with them. I actually think they benefit and welcome some additional support to what they're working on, so.
So that kind of brings us back to, if that, I'm trying to move the conversation along. Bucket number one being financial, can we ask Lori and administration to kind of look into what that could look like and how it could be processed and come back to us with a recommendation? Does that feel fair? Okay, three other buckets.
I really want to be clear though. I'm personally not going to be too enthusiastic unless it's a systemic solution.
I don't, I'll be honest, I'm not sure what that would look like beyond what I've heard for ideas here tonight. So I'm not going to make promises that I'm going to list.
No, I'm just making a statement, I'm making a statement.
Okay. So the next buckets, I don't think we can go into process until we address educational value.
Isn't that part of process? This isn't that part of the.
Well, this, yes, so that's, financial is certainly one process.
No, 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 isn't educational value part of the.
Part of the process, that's why I say.
Racket, stack process.
Yes, I think, I think before we can get to the approval process, we have to decide what our thought is on educational value and how we're doing about that.
Before, if we go back to the first bucket, the equitable accessibility. I mean, I know that you want to do it fast, but you want to do it?
I want to do it, yeah.
Okay, so there's one thing that Nana submitted, they suggested, and that is to actually offer a balanced offering, which means, yes, I know that there will be expensive trips, but at the same time, we can actually encourage teachers to offer domestic trips that will give same or more educational value for a much lower dollar amount.
I think we're hearing that loud and clear and we're also hearing, we have to be careful about what we offer in ones so they don't crowd each other. This is a delicate sort of marketing exercise, if you will.
Not really, because if there be, if there be good offering of domestic, of cheaper, people, there will be more people that will want to go. I mean, the monetary, the monetary question is a deterrent to many people.
We don't know that for sure. That's a good, that you point out the fact that these buckets do overlap. I mean, they're not completely distinct and I realize that. So that, I mean, that ties into the ongoing process and procedures of what trips come and what we're encouraging and everything, and to educational value. What kind of trips are we encouraging?
All these things have so many nuances. There is no way we could cover all this tonight, it's insane. I could go on for ten minutes about short trips versus long trips. I mean, it's just, there's so much to it.
Let's step back for a second.
Well, I'm trying to figure what the goals are for tonight, because this is way too big a task to try.
Exactly, so I'd like to ask, what is the, is the planning process for next year going on now? I guess it is.
Oh, yeah. We're imminently getting ready to do that. Our goal had been to bring you initial approvals for the June ninth meeting and final approvals for the June sixteenth meeting, so that kids would know what was going to be offered for the 2021 school year as we got out this spring.
So it is a now thing.
It's a now thing, sure. So in terms of getting things in place for, we're talking about 2021.
Right.
Are any of these goals for 2021, because to me, a lot of these things feel like 21, 22 and beyond. So I'm trying to feel like, what can we do?
What's for this year and what's?
Now, I'm not saying, then forget about everything else.
Right, right, but what do we plan for the following year and what do we plan as a two-year window?
Right, I mean, it's just.
To be realistic.
Yeah, because we're talking about some potential, very, a big change, you know what I'm saying? Having a conversation about a more significant restructuring of some of the scheduling, et cetera.
But education value is actually a lot.
Well, so go the other way. The housekeeping, it sounds like you've done a great job at sort of organizing forms and things. There's no reason to think you're not going to continue to true up the housekeeping piece, right? So let's just assume, I would assume that that's being done.
Great, we'll put it.
Another question.
We'll put that in the, in the bucket of.
Let me just finish, Yuval, so.
They're going to do that.
So I think that one we can kind of just give to the administration. I think there are short-term and long-term things one can do with the funding side. I recognize there's mechanics, but I'm just, when I made my comment earlier, I want to expand on it. I'm just saying, I think there should be, I would like to see personally an agreement in this school committee session that, of a mechanism, whether it's actually fully worked out for next year or two years from now is less critical to me, I'm a long game guy. I mean, if there was a real collective, and that's why I look to this side of the room and that's what this side of the room, if there was a collective understanding about it, as I said, systemic approach to depersonalizing, you know, just making it a broader way, however it eventually gets, if we could coalesce around that in this set of years, it's not really going to pace what trip plans they do next year. We'll enact what we can and then we'll enact more the following year. So that's the second piece. I think the, the educational value piece, which really then becomes the approval piece, I think, is, yeah, is the core and really it takes, you know, then we really run into a schedule issue about what are they going to do. So I have a question. Does, do the bigger trips tend to be more upperclassmen? Yes or no?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
And I'm going somewhere with this. I think, I like your idea of the four-year plan. I also like the idea of a sort of a capsule trip. And I, you know, I wonder, it's a thought piece, if, if those bigger trips, again, just depending on which ones they are and all this stuff, but if, if certain trips were set, this is upperclassmen only, juniors and seniors. Bigger trip, you know, when you're a freshman, you can start planning towards it, but that's not going to be open to you for two or three years. You have these smaller trips that are available, you know.
Sorry, there is a problem, at the moment, the, many of the trips, many of the more interesting trips, the more educational trips and stuff, many of them are undersubscribed. It's even more.
No, but undersubscription is a market signal that you got too many trips, right? I mean, anyway, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I realize there's all these nuances, but I'm, as a conceptual piece, I'm not looking for consensus on this tonight. If, if there was a clear distinction from a marketing, this is your reward. These are your reward trips. They're big, they're expensive, you're going to work towards them, blah, blah, blah. These are your rewards. There's lots of other educational things that we're making available to the underclassmen. And please take advantage of it. I mean, you know, and maybe there's some whittling down of trips, but if it's undersubscription is a market signal, that's itself an issue that I think should be.
I think a little bit that we're getting into the weeds too much here. I see your suggestion, I don't necessarily agree with it, I don't think we should debate it right now. I feel like we have a few buckets and concepts. We have some recommendations on the table that Court gave us. I feel like the next step now is for us to, we kind of agreed on high-level concepts of financial things, high-level concept that housekeeping, we can give to administration, they'll get done. On process and educational value, I also feel like that's an area where we could say, let's, let's agree on a high-level concept and ask for a recommendation from administration on what they think is realistic to execute over the next, let's say, year and two years. So that we're not all of a sudden enforcing crazy things on an administration that don't make sense. So to me, I would almost say, given the recommendations that we've seen here, would it make sense for you and Mike and team or whoever it is to come back? would it make sense for you and Mike and team or whoever it is to come back to us with, again, on this front, a recommendation in terms of what process you think makes sense? Incorporating the recommendations that are in here.
Just process for what? I just wanted to clarify.
For approval process. And I guess, I mean, maybe we need more educational value piece here. I would advocate that, and this becomes a high-level question, but on educational value, I would advocate that, well, we have hired a superintendent who is an educational expert to bring us recommendations on educational value and anything from trips to curriculum. We don't sit here and second-guess everything Kristen Herbert is doing on curriculum. I don't feel like we should be second-guessing the details on every trip. We should see them, but we should take recommendations from the experts, because we are not the experts.
I actually see that you.
I know you do.
And this goes to the first conversation we had in this room, nothing to change. At the end of the day, curriculum by law is not our domain. We're not asked.
We have to approve it.
We're not asked to actually approve curriculum. On the other hand, the law, state law and unmanuel actually demands that we will approve educational value. So, we definitely should take in consideration what the administration says, but only take into consideration. This is not approved, the fact that administration tells us that there is an education value here, I don't think that we can actually relinquish our responsibility by saying, if they say, they say. Now, there's one more thing that I've asked, and I would like the discussion about it, because it goes to the finances and stuff, and nobody actually commented. I made a very clear suggestion that this committee, and this can be for this year as well, this committee will very clearly give instructions to the administration not to use, or to use vendors only in exceptional cases, because it is mainly usually the vendor's offering is what is being called the plain vanilla trips. They don't have any education, any, any additional value to what they sell as summer activities. So there's no schooling, just a chaperone teacher going and they actually running the trip. And it increases considerably the, the price. And there are other issues that are not yet of transparency that are problematic. I would like to hear the committees' thoughts about it.
I actually think Court addressed it.
I'd like to take, take a go at this. I don't want to avoid any of our responsibilities, and I don't want to be misunderstood when I say the following. I think a lot of what we're seeking is underway right now. I honestly do. I don't think we need to vote until June 9th, when trips come before us and we're gonna know whether Lori Hunter heard us or not. We're gonna know whether Mike Mestrela heard us and tried to balance all of these difficult considerations and come out somewhere with, with difficult choices that try to accommodate these competing needs. On June 9th, if I'm kind of correct, we're gonna look at trips and we're gonna ask, were these scheduled in a strategically sensible way? Are these costs commensurate with the educational value that is put forth in the proposal? We're gonna know what's, what's happening at Dr. Hunter's level and the principal's level by virtue of what gets put in front of us, June 9th. We're gonna know if we got heard, and we're gonna, and Lori's difficulty is, just as ours is, trying to weigh these nuances, as you say, as best we can.
Because there's no perfect way.
We prefaced all of this with, we're, we're, we're not, we're not fixing a broken trip process, we're improving one because we're good enough to now get down to the really difficult stuff around access, around assurance of value for money spent and strategic scheduling that protects trips and confidence by our teachers that we've got their backs. We're weighing so many different.
June 9th is a new committee, right? June 9th is a new committee.
Oh, absolutely.
It doesn't matter, it's the same committee. Different people, it's the same committee, it's only one committee.
Different makeup.
People that won't have had the conversation.
I, I, I wonder what the superintendent thinks about what you just said, Court? Because the superintendent came last time we've been in this juncture. We said we would want to, I actually suggested we vote down trips. And then the superintendent asked, it's already in the process, we'll send a message to the teachers. And then the superintendent asked us here very clearly, she said, I need clear instructions. And I suggested we will give the superintendent clear instruction. And once again, I will say, we said our thing, but we don't give clear instructions. And let's see in June 9th if she, if the superintendent understood us or not. And then you vote down, and then, and then we'll be in the same place. And she said, but it's already in the process and.
I disagree, I disagree. The Sharon Young Fund, or whatever fund we want to call it, was not an integral part of this process a year ago. And I, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be somewhere in, in the process. It may take a year to flesh out, it may take five years to flesh out, it probably did in Newton, too. But we're gonna be further along the road then and now, we're further along now than we were before. And I think this idea of really testing in the most supportive way possible, testing educational value and cost is, is known to, to Mike Mestrela. There's one thing we've been missing for the last hour or whatever time we've been spending on this, and that is that, and we can't forget this, these trips are optional for kids in valleys, these trips are optional for teachers, too. These teachers choose to do this, you know, they don't have to do this. And for those of you who have led international trips, they're pretty rigorous. I did one and I'll never do one again. They're tough stuff, it takes a rare, rare teacher.
Can we, can we wrap this then?
I hope so.
Yes, so I would, I, could I ask this, Court, you've done such a great job pulling together information and giving us recommendations to talk about. We've all discussed the recommendations that you've put out there. I think, given opinions, would you be willing to take this conversation that we've had, including our request for administration to, to bring us kind of a financial equity plan and, and some process recommendations that you've had, and summarize it for us to bring back to the next meeting? We look at the summary, we, we look at your draft plan based on all the feedback that you've heard, and we finalize our plan next time.
I'm gonna suggest something slightly different, and that is that Dr. Hunter and I together suggest how we're gonna best operationalize
That would be great.
As many of these ideas as we can.
Perfect. Perfect.
I go back to one single question that I asked, because this is kind of, I suggested the clear instruction, nobody actually answers me. I would like to suggest that this committee will instruct what I said about vendors. Why, nobody is actually referring to my question?
I actually, I think Court addressed it in his recommendation. He said, one of his recommendations was, if a teacher's going to do a trip with a vendor, they need to show us how, how it's different from just the off-the-shelf trip. Maybe it's the value that that teacher brings and the connection to the curriculum that's been going on in the classroom, whatever it may be, but they need to show us the difference. So I think he's addressed that question.
It was polite language that said, if you're using a, one of these vendors, your bar just got higher. Right, show us what the value.
And as you say, the proof is in the pudding, if we reject a few, it'll mess with the good. So, I want to invoke my very brief privilege as chairman here. What do we gotta do tonight? Do we have to do electric buses? Is there anything pressing about electric buses?
No.
Okay, what do we have to vote on? Let's, let's, I might, I might suggest, let's move to votes and vote the things we gotta vote that don't take a lot of deliberation, and let's wrap it, because it's really.
I think really all the votes would be helpful.
Okay, so let's take the votes, is that okay?
I think those are two in mind.
Oh, yeah. Then we need a motion to table financing electric buses.
Okay.
Does that make, are we still okay if we table that for the main document?
I would.
Entertain a motion to table electric buses.
Some move.
Second.
To, and for the.
Is that for both committees?
For both committees on the assurance this won't numb up anything.
Correct.
Any question?
Any?
Jared, if we, if we postpone it, does it make any burden on you, which means?
No, we already know the financing.
The discussion.
Ah, so you vote, it's all international, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, good, so let's move, uh, vote that, yes, vote for both committees.
Aye.
Aye.
For both committees, aye.
Aye for both. Aye for both committees, we'll do it that way today. Can I just, separate vote, votes should be separate, for Concord, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For region?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Let's go to staff child enrollment.
I move that the Concord Carlisle, Concord, Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to approve the following staff request to enroll her child in Concord Public Schools, Concord Carlisle Regional School District beginning in August 2020, and the tuition be waived. Erin Pinault, teacher at CCHS, son to enroll in kindergarten.
That's just you, oh, in kindergarten, that's just Concord, sorry.
Discussion?
She's a, she's a high school teacher, but it was voted, it should be checked.
It's a joint.
So, so I have a question in the discussion part. If, her child's going to kindergarten, automatically goes to, it's, then green-lighted through 12th? Even though it's a, so we vote as a region for it?
There you go.
Or do you vote as CPS for the CPS?
You're voting as a region because you own the regional teacher contract that is allowing her the privilege, even though she's gonna start the, the child to start at Concord's.
Were the motion and the second for both committees?
Yes.
And for Concord, all, oh, any further discussion? For Concord, all in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed?
For the region?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. One last question, if it was a CPS teacher, then it would just be a K-8 vote until it got to high school?
I, I, we've been doing them all as joint for exactly those reasons, so that they're.
So then should the Carlisle teachers get that consideration?
They do get that. They do the consideration.
Not at the K-8 level, they come back to that approval. I don't want to take time on that now, but it's something.
We take Carlisle teachers who are K-8 when their kids are ready to come to the high school, we accept them.
But you do it at a vote then, not at the time of the.
At a vote then, yeah.
So I, I, I think, I think in the future you ought to even that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what we don't know at that point.
It's joint, it's joint scriminating, you would think.
Okay, I don't know. Okay, next item, vote to approve the 2021 calendar.
So, can I just, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify why this is here. We're still making our way through the remaining components of the calendar for next year, so this is the three dates that we would use of the four at the high school. So there's still another early release to schedule for the high school, but this would give us the opportunity to replicate the K, pre-K-12 paths that we had today. Yep. So these would be early dismissals for both high school and a early dismissal for the middle school that is not their typical Tuesday. It would be the 11 o'clock-ish time, more along the Thanksgiving Day, so I just want to clarify that. So we still have a little bit more to bring you, but we're trying to get this done as we decide things, so.
So, for both regions, would take a motion that the Concord, Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve the school calendar 2020, 2021, early release dates for CCHS and CMS as outlined, Tuesday, October 20, 2020, Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, and Tuesday, February 25th, 2021.
Some move.
And for both?
For both. Second for both.
Any further discussion? All in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
For the region?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Next is the MATLAB license to CCHS.
Just the region, so go ahead, all you.
So Stephen Valentine, parent of CCH student, would like to donate a MATLAB license to CCHS in an amount of $530.19. MATLAB is a programming platform designed specifically for engineers and scientists that both teachers and students would benefit from using. Mr. Valentine will also come in and assist us with training on how to use it. Very nice, Mr. Valentine. Take a motion to approve?
Some move. Second.
No, just one.
With a lot of appreciation, it's a wonderful tool. It's the preeminent tool in the business.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Valentine will be courted.
Yes, automatic.
Oh, that's automatic, yeah.
It's automatic.
Okay, all in favor with gratitude?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, thank you. Okay. Vote to accept donation of field equipment from the CC Youth Baseball and Softball. Is that region?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball and Softball would like to donate the following items to CCHS. Portable field fencing for Memorial Field to allow us to create a turf diamond for youth games and high school practices and scrimmages. Portable backstop netting to allow for safe viewing from the bleachers behind the designated home plate area. Portable pitching mounds that enable CC Baseball and Softball to utilize the turf in inclement weather. And the total amount of the donation is $8,545.99. Motion, should we accept one care to give it to accept that gift worth of field equipment from CC Youth Baseball and Softball?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion?
Just storage, is that an issue?
Under the bleachers.
Okay, thank you.
That lovely area. Yeah. I just have a comment, I think, in the future, sometime down the road, maybe this year, though, we probably need to have a more substantive discussion about how we move forward, making improvements to our facilities in general. A very generous gift, I'm so happy to accept it. But I think there's a lot of things we need to discuss, not just about the.
Your, your point is, as we continue to accept a gift here and a gift there without a larger context, perhaps.
Yeah, you might remember Cynthia's gonna join me to sit with CC at play in youth baseball and softball, and some of the folks in town have got some things they might want to talk with us to help support. The track is in that discussion, too, and we totally need a master plan. So I think my vision was we'd have the initial meeting with them, which is finally happening this week, get a sense of what they're thinking, and then, you're right, bring it back here for big pictures.
Talk to other people as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, great. So this is the Band-Aid because that hasn't happened yet, which is why it's portable and it's gonna store it in the bleachers.
Yeah.
Have we voted?
Yeah.
We have a motion, okay?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the generous gift of CC Youth Baseball and Softball?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Court?
No.
Aye.
Okay. Just checking. Okay, very good. So, these next items are domestic field trips, they look like they're pretty much like team-oriented trips.
All but the junior state.
Right.
Yes, and these are very much annual trips that this spring coaches.
There's not, there's no detail, it's just a list, true? A man is something.
No, these are all house.
No, you click on them, click on them and they tell you stuff.
The trip form is all attached.
I don't have it, so I don't have to pay.
Oh, there's a different one.
So, would anybody object if we took them as a group?
No.
Okay. So, Mr. Mestrela was requesting initial approval for five overnight trips. In April, softball mystery trip. And the Junior State of America Spring State Convention. In May, the 2020 Ultimate Frisbee Trip. Cooperstown and the Frisbee Club Trip to PBI. PBI is not a domestic, right, where's PBI?
They are going to Northampton.
Oh, Northampton, okay, that's a different PBI, okay.
I move approval of all trips.
Initial approval.
Initial approval, sorry, of all trips as listed.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
I simply didn't have the, the answer, did you check it that I didn't vote against?
Do we need to move on these policies tonight?
It doesn't matter, I think that we can take it as a consent agenda, we had a discussion last meeting. So, if, I would just suggest it as a consent agenda, unless somebody read it and, and have something to say about it.
Okay.
Because the discussion was last meeting.
I know, I'm just taking on faith, it's penalty three, okay.
So I would move to approve the four suggested school committee policies as were discussed last time and brought to our attention in this, in this agenda.
And just for the TV, can you read out the titles of them?
Yes, file BDF A slash E slash one, School Improvement Plan. File BDF A slash E slash two, Submission and Approval of the School Improvement Plan. File J I. File JICC dash student conduct school buses, and file EE AEC. I want to remind you, these are the same files precisely in two different locations. And file JICFA prohibiting of favor.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Actually, we have to vote for.
You have to vote.
Yeah, to vote.
Oh, yes, um.
Roll call?
So my, my, I, I would move my.
Your motion was for both?
For both.
Was the second for both?
Second for both.
Then all in favor for Concord?
Aye.[1704.75]